Good evening. I call this February 23rd, 2021 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville Facebook page and the Town of Morrisville website. On February 25th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville social media pages. To ensure the safety of town residents, staff, and the Town Council while following guidelines related to public gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams meeting. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. Tonight's meeting includes two public hearings. Town Council understands the importance of active citizen participation. Public hearing comments were accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. Comments received from interested parties providing full name and address via thepublichearing@townofmorrisville.org email address will be read verbatim during the public hearing for up to three minutes each, for a total of 30 minutes. Town Council may choose to suspend some or all of these rules if desired. As we begin tonight, I want to let everyone know why we are meeting. There is work to be done and decisions to be made, and this is the governing body entrusted by our residents to obtain the information necessary to have productive discussions leading to decisions which will connect our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. Through our ongoing efforts with staff and with the input of our residents and stakeholders, we will hold ourselves accountable to living up to our adopted values of dedication, integrity, courtesy, and innovation in everything we do in order to create a sustainable and thriving community that celebrates diversity and inclusion while enhancing the well-being and people that live, work, and play in Morrisville. That is our purpose and reason for being here. Thank you for joining us. Eric Smith, our Town Clerk, will conduct a roll call of council members.
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Sorry, present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councils present.
Thank you, sir. Now is there a motion and second to invoke Rule 19? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao, please.
I make a motion that we invoke Rule 19.
I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, please.
I'll second that motion.
Town Clerk Smith, will you please conduct a roll call vote on that motion?
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati? Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes.
Thank you, sir. We are at Item 4, the adoption of regular agenda. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policies review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflicts of interest with any items on the agenda. If any council members have any such conflicts, please ask to be recognized in chat. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao for comment.
Yeah, just a comment, no conflict, but I wanted to be transparent to the public that the, well, Dominion Realty, their CEO has been a longtime friend of mine, Andy Andrews, and I've known him for many years, over 15, 17 years. I just want to disclose that to the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
I'm ready to make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Okay, I recognize you to make that motion.
I will make that motion.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Town Clerk Smith, if you'll conduct a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati? Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the regular agenda passes.
Thank you, sir. We are at Item 5, the consent agenda. There are seven items on this evening's consent agenda. Consideration of items related to plat review, officer appointment recommendation, a resolution authorizing a second revision to the MOU for a joint public works facility, Solidways Convenience Center, a resolution authorizing an MOU with Wake County for fire station design, a resolution approving committee chair and vice chair appointments, and approval of the three sets of January meeting minutes. Would any council members like to pull any of those items? I'm looking in chat. I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Johnson for comment, please.
So before we move forward, I'd like to make sure that Councilmember Robati is, is somebody helping her with her mute versus unmute situation? She apparently is having a problem being unmuted. I just want to make sure we're working on that. I'll follow up with her. I'm not sure if it's on our end at all, but I'll follow up with her offline.
Okay, we could hear Town Manager Paige saying that she's following up on that item. She was a little bit faint, so I was relaying that for everyone's benefit. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, for helping us through that. So where were we? I'll go ahead and re-ask for a motion and a second on that one. I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, please.
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I just want to make sure that Councilmember Robati didn't want to pull anything. If we could somehow verify that, then I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. We will take a pause in the action until we hear back from staff on that issue.
I believe the, I believe the issue is on her end. She does not want to pull anything from the consent agenda. We will continue to work with her.
Thank you, Martha. Then I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a second for that motion?
I'll second. This is Dicky.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. I heard a second from her. Town Clerk Smith, if you please do a roll call vote on the approval of the consent agenda. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. As there is nothing pulled from the consent agenda, we will skip over Item 6. We are now at Item 7. We have one presentation tonight, a proclamation recognizing Read Across America Day. We are pleased to have representatives of the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee be part of tonight's reading of the proclamation. I will read the first three whereas clauses, and then we will hear from our MPAC representatives. This is a proclamation recognizing March 2nd, 2021 as Read Across America Day. Whereas the Town of Morrisville has countless families who value reading and continuing education, and whereas March 2nd, 2021 is the birthday of Theodore Geisel, also known as Dr. Seuss, and is recognized as National Read Across America Day, and whereas the Morrisville Town Council would like to encourage everyone to read as much as possible, and would like to share the following poem in honor of National Reading Day.
Old Mr. Morris asks what do we need to make a good living, to thrive, to succeed?
Here in our new town with bits and e-bits, crisscrossed by trains and overhead flights...
We need lots of data and fiber to send it and light-driven optics in order to bend it.
Into our homes and onto our screens, and when it arrives to learn what it means.
We read it, my friends, for our comprehension, unlocking new worlds to wonders to mention.
So pick up a book or a tablet or phone, transport your whole family to a magical zone.
Where words convey visions...
Sharp tastes and bright sounds.
Old Mr. Morris asks what do we need to make a good living, to thrive, to succeed?
Thank you to all the members of our resident committees, and in this case, additional thanks to the members of our education committee and volunteer readers. Elena Reed, daughter of MPAC member Stephanie Reed, Mark Dixon, MPAC member, and Betsy O'Connor, the MPAC vice chair. At this time, we are at Item 8, public address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received.
There were no comments received for public address, Mayor Colley.
Okay, thank you, sir. We are now at Item 9, public hearing. There are two public hearings on the agenda, a proposed amendment of the land use plan and zoning map for Zero Slater Road, and a proposed amendment of the zoning map for 3109 and 703 Slater Road. Elliot Ward, planner 2, will facilitate the first item. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. There were a few updates for this item with the briefing. Let's go through them quickly. There was some discussion about the northern side of Slater Road and that it could incorporate multifamily. So multifamily has been added as a prohibited use for that northern side of Slater where the proposed office is. There was an additional condition proposed that would require a 25% additional landscaping for the street yard buffer on the south side of Slater in front, along the frontage in front of the multifamily development. So that would be 25% additional plantings over what's required in the UDO currently. The petitioner's application was updated to include representative building elevations. So those are an attachment to in the packet. But, you know, as a reminder, they are illustrative at this point and may not represent what's finally, the final product for the actual multifamily buildings. And then finally, the applicant has provided the estimated amount of public infrastructure investment, which was requested by council at the briefing. Their estimation is $950,000. That figure includes all road improvements, the sidewalk on the north side, as well as the multi-use path on the south side of Slater, the public water line and the sewer line extension. That $950,000 does not include the $15,000 the applicant has included as a condition for the traffic light at Slater Road and Sorrel Grove Church. It also does not include the estimated $516,000 for the Parkland PIL required by the UDO. And that was all the updates I had. Neil Gosh, representing the applicant, has asked to speak again briefly before we move forward.
Okay, happy to recognize him. Please go ahead and announce your name, address, and your role.
Thank you, Mayor Colley, and Mr. Ward also for your presentation. Good evening, everyone. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group, which is located at 112 West Main Street in Durham. I am representing Dominion Realty Partners on this application. Actually, I wanted to start first by apologizing to the mayor. We were so focused upon prohibiting multifamily on the northern side and enhancing our buffer on the southern side that we forgot to remove outdoor recreation and outdoor entertainment from the list of prohibited uses, as you suggested. I assure you that was an oversight, and we will amend that condition before you all vote on this case at your next meeting. Aside from that, I wanted to take a little bit of time to reflect back to the previous meeting where this item was heard, because there was another item on that agenda regarding the town's future land use plan, which elicited many comments from the general public and a lot of discussion from council members. Before this meeting, our team took the time to review some of those comments to see how well our project either already fits in with what we heard, or how we might be able to adjust our project to better fit with those comments. One thing we heard was that there was a lot of resistance from town residents to more multifamily in townhomes in Morrisville on properties west of Highway 44. I offer that in contrast to the lack of negative comments we have received from our neighbors or the public about this project. Moreover, we also received a unanimous recommendation of approval from the planning and zoning board. We believe this is because many residents and the planning and zoning board members believe that this project is appropriate in the area where we are proposing it. We certainly feel the same way. The need for more schools also featured prominently in the residents' comments about the future land use plan proposed by the town. So we looked at demographics from Dominion's other project in Morrisville, which is a multifamily project, to see if we could ascertain exactly, you know, what the makeup of Dominion's apartments generally looks like. And what we found was that, you know, while the information collected doesn't stipulate whether the lessees are married, we, 23% of them sign the lease as co-head of household, so we're using that as a proxy for having been married. And from that, we also were able to estimate that roughly 5% of them had dependents. So generally speaking, the type of clientele that Dominion Partners apartment would attract would be young professionals, particularly, I mean, that's the idea here, particularly those who might work in the nearby office area, and probably not young families or starter families. So, you know, we think that this project ultimately is appropriate here and would be a great benefit to Town Morrisville. And, you know, if, we view the project as one complete project that really elevates the profile for Town Morrisville in this corridor, for headquarter-type companies that are looking for a new space. It allows for Grade A, Class A office space, just like at the adjacent building at 4540, and also includes a residential piece, which is becoming more and more relevant as people are moving towards more of a mixed-use feel, where they can live somewhere in close proximity to goods and services and where they work. So this project, we think, is going to help fit that mold and will be definitely a benefit to the Town of Morrisville. I want to thank you for your time, and we have our team available to answer questions if you have any, and we're looking forward to having your feedback tonight and getting a vote at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate all those changes and clarification on a number of items. At this time, we can go ahead and open the public hearing. So I'd like to do that. I'd like to ask if there are, well, first, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao, who had a question.
Yeah, just a comment and a question. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Gosh and the team at Dominion for providing the economic figures. Just for the public to know, we're looking at well over $1 million investment when you add the transportation parks and the constitution to the traffic light. So I think it's a significant investment. And the second thing is, I think this goes well with our Live Connected, Live Well brand in Morrisville, the fact that we have companies coming here, and I think if we're going to continue to grow tech, life, science companies, it's critical in, you know, that Martha Family would go where the people are working, otherwise they're going to go somewhere else. So I thank you for that. I just did have one question. The applicant has had a tradition, particularly the CEO and founder, of making additional investments in athletic amenities. And I just wanted to know if you could go back to the applicant and ask him, and maybe we can get some feedback from staff, if there's any additional greenway projects or athletic-type facilities that he would be willing to consider to making an investment, because we're looking at really collaborative partnerships with developers. And so I'm a little bit embarrassed asking for more investment after the amount of money I've seen invested right now, but he does have a track record of doing this around the state. And if you could ask the applicant, CEO, and the team there, and then maybe get back to us or our staff and the council, that would be much appreciated.
Certainly. Councilmember Rao, and yeah, I think, I'll just say, I will need to confer with my client on that, but I think generally, as you've laid out, you're correct, and Dominion does have a good track record of making contributions to other facilities in Dominion's facilities where they do build. Just point of clarification, I will go speak to my client about this, but would you want to get an answer to that question tonight, which I'll just, you know, we're all doing the public hearing the COVID way, so I'll just be texting them to figure out what we can do? Or were you thinking we would come back at a later time?
Well, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just felt like, I just felt like asking the question, and I would like Mr. Andrews and the team to consider any additional potential investments. And we want to thank him and his team for investing in Morrisville. I know they've done other projects, but you don't have to answer it tonight. Just if you could talk to them and they can get back to me and the staff and, you know, at the next meeting would be fine, as long as we copy the council.
Could I recognize Chris Carlino on my team, who I think, he, yeah, I think he's got just some thoughts on this.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Mayor Colley and Town Council, my name is Chris Carlino with Dominion Realty Partners at 501 Fayette Street in Raleigh, North Carolina, Suite 100. I'd like to thank you, everyone, for their time and effort thus far with this project. And to Councilmember Rao's point, yes, we have done that in the past. We want to be a good neighbor and a good steward to the communities that we build and develop in. We are local, headquartered right in Raleigh, and a long development history throughout the Triangle, so it's important to us to leave a legacy. We don't just build projects and move on and blow back out to, you know, where we came from in California or Texas or New York. So these projects are legacy projects for us. We're proud of what we build. We build green, environmentally sensitive projects that are sourced using local materials. But yes, to answer the question at hand, I think we would certainly, we would commit today to doing some sort of, you know, additional commitment to some sort of infrastructure that benefits the town above and beyond what we've already committed to doing. So happy to work with staff after this meeting or Neil to, you know, you know, more detail or more finely define what that might look like, but I can tell you today that, you know, that is something we've done in the past and are willing to consider here, to be good neighbors and good citizens of Morville.
Thank you for your consideration on that.
Yeah, and I'll just say, so that's a, probably, based on the question, I think that's as solid a commitment as we can make unless there is a specific project or facility in mind, which we're happy to work with staff to identify one or whatever.
Correct, yes. Whether it's a specific project or escrowing, you know, funds to be earmarked, you know, to the Parks and Rec Department, or however you guys see fit, that's something we're certainly willing to entertain.
Yeah, I was looking at either one, either like a specific amenity that he might have in mind on a certain sport that he liked to play, or possibly an earmarked fund to the Parks and Rec that, you know, then we would have another couple hundred thousand dollars that we could, you know, put to it. So it's really, I want to leave this question to you guys. I just wanted to sort of see, maybe you guys could talk to the staff and come back to council at the next meeting.
Yeah, we're certainly happy to do that.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you both. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, and then we're going to go ahead and open and close the public hearing after Ms. Fender. Councilmember Fender?
Thank you, and I appreciate the applicant making the additional changes to the proposed development. I do have a question. Kind of lost my thought with the dog barking there. I was curious about the development. You have office use on one side and apartments on the other. You know, I hear that, yeah, this is max use, we're providing the apartment for people that may be working in that office space. We, I hear that we already have apartments all over Morrisville. So I'm just curious why your company did not consider building office space on both sides of Slater Road?
Yeah, this is...
Thank, oh, are you addressing that, Chris?
Go ahead, Neil. Go ahead.
And I would say thank you for the question, Councilmember Fender. So I will say, we did take a lot of our cues from the land use plan, both the current and the draft land use plan for this area. And this area is, the southern side of Slater was slated on both plans for residential. So when we look at the project, Dominion, Chris can probably speak better than us, but Dominion looked at the project, they thought it made a lot of sense as a joint project with both office and residential, especially since the long-range plan indicated that that's what the town was looking for in this location. So it worked well both with, for what Dominion thought would be a great, a great way to attract new companies, and it also seemed to work well with what was on the, both the current and draft future land use map. Chris, did you want to add to that?
No, I think, I think that's accurate. And Tommy, I'll let you comment as well. I believe the southern siding question here does have some topography challenges that, you know, would lend itself to difficult construction of an office pad and therefore some of the 3-4 splits that take advantage of that topography better lent itself to multifamily on that side as well.
Yes, this is Tommy Craven. That's certainly true. I'm Tommy Craven, Priest Craven and Associates, where the project civil engineers. Chris is absolutely right about the topographic challenges actually on both sites, but the southern side is a little more restrictive. And between the land use, the land use plans and the topography, it certainly seemed like residential was the appropriate choice for the south side of the street. It does have good pedestrian connections. There'll be sidewalk along Slater, a multi-use path along Slater, so there'll be great connection to all the existing office and commercial areas that are adjacent to the site.
Why does the topography lend itself better to apartment as opposed to an office building?
Well, we use the, since the apartment building has a smaller footprint than the office building, we're able to step the site a little more readily than we can in an office situation. And we also are using split buildings that will be three or four stories on the low side and two or three stories on the high side, so that we can step down the site more effectively.
Why couldn't you do that with an office building?
Well, it's hard to split the office building. One thing that we have looked at and are entertaining on the office side is to, is to drop the entire floor plate of the office building one story below the street, so that from Slater Road, it will appear to be, it will appear to be a three-story office building from Slater. it will appear to be a three-story office building from Slater Road and it will access out the back at ground level to the lower floor. That's, but it's still such a large footprint compared to the apartment buildings that it just, that footprint radiates out over the site. All the parking has to be set up accordingly. And it just carries a much bigger impact than the series of office buildings.
Right. I'm still, I guess I'm still not convinced that an office building couldn't be built on the southern side. You know, I'm an engineer, granted, I'm electrical engineer and not civil. But as engineers, we typically find a solution for, you know, most situations. So I guess I'm not entirely convinced. But, you know, I will make note in your presentation, it does acknowledge that it'd still be an estimated impact of an additional 50 students to our school system, to a school system that's already breaking at the seams. So I'm really not in favor of the apartments on the southern side. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Any final comments from our applicants before we open the public hearing?
Well, I guess I would just ask a question. I don't exactly know what would come up at the public hearing. But should something come up, would there be an opportunity for rebuttal?
Yes, we welcome the opportunity to have you guys address any questions that might come up after public hearing. And if you could stick around during our discussion, that would also be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would like to recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, I'm having some technical issues and I can't access the presentation. But can you just refresh my memory about how many apartments are proposed in the project?
Sure. It's 230 total rooms.
Okay. So, and that's bedrooms, right? So some would be two bedrooms and some would be one? Or is that 230 apartments?
It's 230 units, some may be one bedroom, two bedrooms. Yeah, well, some may be one bedroom, some may be two bedrooms.
So I definitely agree with everything that Councilmember Fender just said about the, about the schools. But my concern is really adding that many people to the roads. I, I mean, we, I don't think that our town infrastructure can handle 460 more cars. Like, we have too many cars on the road as it is. So I have some concerns about, about traffic that will be generated out of another big apartment complex.
And Councilmember Robati, was that, I mean, did you want me to respond to that? Because this, this project did have a traffic impact analysis. And we ultimately did end up committing to not only everything which was a recommended road improvement as a result of the traffic that would be generated by this project, but we also committed to paying into a fund for a traffic light off-site that this project didn't necessarily warrant. But we wanted to make sure that that, that when that traffic light is warranted, there would be funds in place to build it. Dominion is looking at trying to improve this road network, which is why, I think it was in the staff report and staff presentation, it's why this project is committing to around a million dollars' worth of public infrastructure. That's infrastructure that will be shared by anyone in the town of Morristown. So this project is committing itself to doing around a million dollars of that, not to mention all of the additional, you know, construction costs for the project itself. And also paying more than half a million dollars into the town's park fund.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Town Clerk Smith, were there any public hearing comments on this item, sir?
No, sir, there were no public hearing comments received for this item.
Okay. Given the fact that there are no public hearing comments, I'd entertain a motion at this time to close the public hearing as of midnight tomorrow night, February 24th. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion. I apologize, I can't enter my request in the chat, Mayor.
Okay, I recognize Councilmember Robati with her motion as a second. Town Clerk Smith, if you please do a roll call vote on closing the public hearing on this item as of midnight tomorrow night, February 24th.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamulla?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowan?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing as of midnight, February 24th, passes your names.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've already begun to touch on some of the discussion on this item and we're not scheduled to vote for another two weeks. But I'd like to weigh in now and then I'll recognize other people in chat. I'll try to recognize those who haven't commented yet first. So I'd like to share some thoughts. As I stated when we last discussed this item, I am fine with the plans for the parcel north of Slater Road as we value development in that area which supports our economic development and competitiveness. We have, however, heard from so many, very many engaged and informed residents who are concerned about upzoning parcels outside of the subareas which support our long-term vision for balanced growth. So I request that the parcel south of Slater Road remain medium density to not add additional stress to our schools, roads, and open space infrastructure. It didn't come to my mind last time, but I should have mentioned that I would strongly suggest that this applicant go ahead and pull this for now and resubmit as two separate items. Because we are essentially talking about two separate items. And I don't hear a lot of concerns about the one item, about the office, but I'm hearing lots of concerns about the second item. So if we could parse those, I'm not sure why they came through as one item in the first place. I think that would be a much cleaner way to do that. And I would hope that in the future, staff would be able to do something like that as well. Additionally, we have had comments during our land use plan, and the applicant has mentioned a couple of times that they were basing a lot of what they're bringing forth on the land use plan, past and future, and that the future land use plan, as presently shows, going from MDR to HDR. And there's been lots of comments about how we will be a lot tougher on rezonings going forward to make sure that we don't overstress our infrastructure. And I don't hear that just on east side of 54 or west side. I hear that in general for the entire town. So unless, I would love for us as a council to demonstrate our commitment to that in that outside the subareas, our rezonings will be very diligently looked at and not really what I'm looking for at this time until we get our infrastructure caught up. So those are the comments I have on that. I think it's important for us to parse this one out, look at them separately, and really consider keeping this medium density. And as I said, I'd love for the applicant to sharpen their pencil and come back with a medium density, which they could do by write at this space. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rowan. Even though he's spoken on this one before, I don't see anyone else in chat who wants to chime in.
I completely disagree with that request. I think that this applicant has gone above and beyond the call of duty to make over one and a half million dollars of investments, including $500,000 in the parks. I think, Mayor, I don't understand the logic of, I understand that we're listening to citizens about not adding traffic to the roads, but I couldn't live with myself if I walked away from a million and a half dollars' worth of investment in the town, plus they're willing to consider additional investment. I think that we, when residential is near office space, why would we not want to provide amenities for people to live here when they're working here? Because if they're going to move somewhere else, that's just a loss to Morristown. So on this issue, I totally don't understand your logic. I understand if the residential was near a neighborhood, like we heard concerns with Kip Creek, where we actually went parcel by parcel and said we didn't want to improve it. But, I mean, just for the record, I, you know, completely disagree with that logic and will absolutely not support separating the two items. And I want to thank the applicant for their investment in Morristown. Thank you.
Okay. I'll respond to that real quickly and then recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. To your point, I understand that there is synergy with having office near apartments. There will be hundreds of new apartments in the subareas. These office goers will not have to travel far because there are lots coming. And we appreciate the residents' support of the land use plan and the subareas. And we have heard very strongly from them that they are not necessarily interested in having more tax revenue or these amenities. They are interested in having our infrastructure catch up before we start approving more residents in town. Okay, at this time, I would like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, just a point of process. It would be really helpful if you did not respond to each one of the council comments because we are trying to get our first round of comments out there. I understand your position and I think the applicant has heard your position. But if you would be, have, give us the courtesy of not responding to our position directly, I would appreciate that.
I appreciate that as well. We are trying to encourage discussion. And to that end, I'd like to recognize you for any discussion on this item.
I would like not to discuss at this time. I would like for us to have the opportunity for each council member, if they choose, to state their positions and then we can go into discussion. I don't want to discuss my points with you directly. I want just to put it out there so that others can consider and then we can discuss as a council.
Exactly. Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
That is not my comment. I have some, okay? I'm just asking about process. When I state my comments, I don't want to debate them with you. Okay?
I understand there isn't.
I just feel like that was unfair to Councilmember Rowan. And I don't want this process to continue. So here is my position and my understanding of this proposed project. This is a project in our, outside of our areas, of course. But there are a mix of uses being proposed. There's office space and there's residential living spaces. We are seeing more and more projects where the living spaces that are nearby to office spaces are highly desirable. My concern is the intensity of the living spaces, 200-plus living spaces. And it would potentially impact schools. The units are one to two bedrooms. The two bedrooms could potentially have school-aged children and so could the one bedrooms. But it's a lower possibility. There are, there's a significant amount of infrastructure investment proposed by the applicant that is above the standard requirement for this type of project. I think that should be considered overall when looking at the project as a whole. They are offering infrastructure such as traffic control as well as park payment and loop, which could help our park system. And it's all a balance. When we look at these projects, we need to consider not just catching up the infrastructure because with the investment with this project, that would contribute to investing in the infrastructure gap, if you will, above what the standard project would do. So I, I don't want to dismiss this project as, we don't want any of something, but we need to look at it as its entirety and the contribution that it could make to the town. Again, the residential is a little worrisome. It seems a little intense to me. But I, I just think we need to slow down and not be thinking in absolutes. There are many different ways to approach this. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
So I am going to echo Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's point about please allowing each one of us to have an opportunity to speak and do not speak after each one of us. We don't, we all adhere to that and let each other speak. And I think that would be really helpful to the conversation. We don't all have the opportunity to speak after every comment. So I want to echo her concerns there. I also want to say, TJ, your idea about scrutinizing rezonings across the town except for the subareas, I also vehemently disagree with. I, you know I have concerns with some of the subareas. I intend, when those rezonings come in, to be equally, if not harder, on those rezoning requests. So I want that out there. So I'm concerned with that thought. And number two, there are a lot of infrastructure investments that this applicant is offering to the town. Many, many of the infrastructure improvements that we've received over the years have come from the development community. They have not all come from our citizens and our taxpayers, but they have come from development as it occurs. So I don't want to be dismissive, and I'm not, I'm not saying anybody is, but I want to make sure we're not being dismissive of the investment that this applicant is making and apparently is willing to make an additional investment that we'll hear more about, I assume, in the next couple of weeks. So I'd like to learn more about that that's to come. And then I do agree wholeheartedly that when we look at these rezonings, we do need to look at the traffic implications. Every development is going to have some kind of effect on our traffic congestion. I want to say sometimes in a good way, mostly it's in a negative way. So it's, how do we mitigate those impacts? And this applicant is offering some, some great solutions to mitigate those congestion impacts. But I also want to make sure, and I don't know if our staff can bring up, but during the presentation two weeks ago, the slide presentation on this, on this item, there was a slide that talked to the traffic impact analysis, the work that was done to identify what those impacts would be. And if y'all could bring that up, that might be helpful. I think it's really important to understand the impacts of an office building to our traffic and the impacts of residential development to our traffic. And they often are not what you expect and they often are surprising. So I don't know if the applicant wants to talk a little bit more to that one slide. That might be helpful. Because according to the slide, the multi-housing side of this project actually is a lesser impact to traffic than the general office use on the other side. So if somebody could help find that slide and we could talk about that, that might be important.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Eric, I just want to say that that's actually the other rezoning item. That's the other presentation. So if you go up.
Thank you.
Or Jeanne, sorry. It's slide five, yep, right there.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't know if our staff wants to talk to this or, um, the applicant wants to talk to this, but I think this is, um, worthy of reviewing again.
Uh, if, I'm happy to talk to it, speak to it if, if that's appropriate.
Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, uh, I think what you're seeing here is exactly what, what we would expect. Uh, you know, the, the, if you think about this a regular day, uh, normally folks would, would leave their, wherever they live, uh, for work, normally. I, I think a lot of people are staying home these days, but, uh, I know I am. But, uh, you know, folks tend to leave, uh, in the morning and then would come back, at least during the weekday, would come back towards the end of, uh, you know, rush hour, I guess, five o'clock. Um, and so you don't get much of a surge of traffic in multifamily, uh, or in any residential, frankly. You, you've got, you've got really, um, regimented times when people come and when people leave and in between, you don't really have a whole lot of traffic. The same could not be said about office. So office also has the same, uh, people arrive in the morning and leave in the evening typically. They also have the lunch hour rush, which you don't get in residential communities during the weekday. And they also have a, a steady flow of folks coming to the site, uh, just throughout the day, uh, whether, you know, whatever it is, appointment. So what, what, what we find is that office uses typically are more intense than residential uses, just, I mean, it's hard to, you're comparing apples to oranges there, but as far as trips on the road, generally, you know, we don't talk about residential as, as a measure of square foot, but that, you know, on a square foot basis, you're going to get more trips from an office use than from a residential use. The other thing to note is that, you know, the, the, the traffic times, peak traffic times for office and multifamily are, are off by exactly the amount of your commute, right? So you don't have traffic at the office until you get there and you don't have, and, and you only have traffic at the, uh, residential when you leave. So the, the peak times for traffic, um, for residential and office actually aren't at the same time, they're, they're near the same time. So what, what this results in is where you have residential near office uses, the traffic tends to work, oh, oh, better than say if you had a, a much larger residential where everyone is trying to leave at the same time. And, and one, another thing I wanted to note, um, I believe it was Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, I think, who was talking about the intensity of the use. And the current zoning condition does limit the, the total number of multifamily units to 230. However, we actually are, uh, our site plan shows 207 units. And if that would make this project, uh, uh, better for you, we'd be happy to drop that down. The 230 units was based on the traffic study, which is what the traffic study assumed. But we found that 207 units was a more sensible fit for this parcel. Thank you.
Can I, can, just a, a follow-up question? Um, who actually conducted the TIA and was it...
Yeah. Uh, so actually, Raimi Kemp did and, and, uh, we have Caroline on the line if you'd like to hear from her. Caroline Bajarski.
Hi. My name is Caroline Bajarski and I'm with Raimi Kemp, an assistant. Um, our address is 5808 Farringdon Place in Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm a licensed professional engineer. Um, I didn't, um, see all this traffic study, but I was a part of conducting it, um, and I am familiar with the study and can answer any questions that you have regarding how we come up with the trip generation, um, numbers or any of the mitigations, um, related to the traffic study.
So, yeah, let me, no, thank you for that, Caroline. Uh, so let me ask you a quick question. If we're, we're talking now, what was the TIA? Okay, so the TIA was based on 203 units. We just heard, um, there'll be a reduction to 207 units for the project now. Um, so thank you, Mr. Gosh, that's helpful. Um, when you, when you can, when you look at this, it, it kind of seems off. Um, you know, 230 units, but yet only 77 people are leaving in the morning. Where, where are the other, you know, you'd think there'd probably be 230 cars. So can you talk to that a little bit? What, what...
Yeah, absolutely. So that's a common, um, thought that everyone has. Um, but when you think about it, most people, um, arrive at their job at different times. Some people, um, work from home, some people, um, you know, will take their kids into school or something. So everyone is leaving their house at different times. And the data that we base, um, our trip generation off of is national data that is, um, it's based, it's called the Institute of Transportation, Transportation Engineers, um, Trip Generation Manual. And it's thousands and thousands of data points that is, um, nationwide. There's points in North Carolina, obviously, and it is based on just typical uses. And what they found is, um, they come up with an equation based on the number of units, based on the, um, in this instance, it's a multifamily development. So they're looking at, um, townhomes and apartments, um, just places where the similar demographic is, um, living and working. Um, and they come up with equations and figure out what, how many vehicles are leaving in the morning and how many are, um, coming back in the afternoon. And these are the numbers that they come up with. And to, the reason why it doesn't match up is because everyone lives a different life and leaves to work at a different time. Not everyone is leaving at exactly the same time every day or arriving home at exactly the same time.
Okay, thank you. And this is, um, just one slide that is part of a, um, a multi-page study, I would assume, that our staff has. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Pretam. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Hey, thanks, TJ. Um, couple of things, I think, Caroline, uh, if we stick to the slide, right? Um, I wanted, in your professional opinion, um, if we have like a Walmart or a Wegmans, you know, and, uh, office space and then a multifamily, uh, in terms of intensity, which ones do you rank the highest trip generator?
Um, typically retail is a higher trip generator than an office or a, um, residential development. However, um, it all depends on the intensity and the, um, relationship of the traffic. Um, if it's in a shopping center where everything is, um, internal, um, there's a lot of internal capture trips that could occur. Um, but typically retail is one of the most intense uses, um...
Okay. So, um, and, and, uh, so you think in terms of commercial and retail, like, you know, uh, general office and multifamily are, you know, a kind of housing, it is the general office which will be the highest trip generator than the multifamily, right?
Uh, yes, as shown in the slide.
Okay, okay. All right. Um, for me, I, I've, I believe that when we look at, I continuously hear a couple of comments, right? And then, uh, about the infrastructure is not in place. I have a hard time to, you know, have that in my mind. The infrastructure is okay for commercial versus not okay for residential is kind of hard to quantify because it is the both use the same road. And we know the kind of usage, um, for office space is, you know, much higher. And we have 50% of Morrisville commercial, or 50/51, depends, you know, what the latest track is. And, uh, I also want to bring this up. I was in the census committee, so I had asked a general question to Sharon Peterson, who was the long-range planning administrator working for the Wake County Census. And I asked her specifically, um, can you give me, you know, the daytime population of Morrisville? And, and this is based on, I don't know what it says, like she says ACS 2004 to 2018 five-year average. Um, the total residents, uh, is 25,000 and total people working in this area is 25,539. And total working outs, like, and then she said the total daytime population estimate, uh, in Morrisville is 37,136. So we know that from our transportation planning. A lot of people come from outside. And in our charter, we have live and work and play. And if we are trying to basically cut the live part of it and just say we are okay with the commercial aspect of it, in fact, the commercial aspect is adding more traffic than ever, you know, to compare to the other usages. I think we need to have a consistency. That's how, where I have a hard time compounding. Understand, school is a component, but when it comes purely for infrastructure, um, commercial adds more traffic than residential. That's a given fact. And Caroline, and I also want to ask Michelle if that's, you agree with that?
Um, I, I will agree that at site driveways, commercial does add traffic and it does add, um, it does add traffic to the surrounding roadways. Um, however, there's one thing that I would like to just point out, um, and that is that, um, in terms of, as, you know, it's suggested, the actual population, um, vehicles on the road is, um, uh, sorry, um, the actual, like, true population generator is residential because that is someone who is living there. Um, however, your daytime numbers, yes, trust, people need to live somewhere in order to drive somewhere and have a vehicle. So, um, at the roadways where the office is, more vehicles will be on the roadway, um, coming from other areas, um, if they don't live near there.
Yeah. And, and, and also like for me, I, when I take every rezoning very seriously, I look at where it stands and also like, you know, Slater Road, um, and it has a quick access to 40. There's a whole lot of, uh, you know, improvement that getting done. We are spending millions from DOT. It's, and so I, I see like that infrastructure is in place or is getting in place. So I, I feel like, you know, uh, that this area is good and I totally agree. Um, I heard the comments about, um, the terrain and, uh, if, uh, so I, I do understand the constraint too. So I just wanted to put that out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I believe at this time, everyone's had a chance to address their initial thoughts on this. I'd like at this time to go ahead and have some give and take discussion back and forth amongst our council. Uh, I'd first like to recognize Councilmember Bender.
Thank you. I just, I had a couple of comments and a question. Uh, my first comments are, is that, um, schools are infrastructure. Infrastructure does not, um, it, it's not just, um, roads or buildings. School is considered part of our infrastructure and that's where a lot of the comments come, um, from our resi... Um, the other question I had was, you know, we're getting, um, it seems to be a trend lately that, um, office space includes labs as well, a mixture of office and lab. And, um, you know, I think that is very, um, applicable and, um, it makes sense. Sorry, I have a cat running around my, um, room. But, um, I think it makes sense from a point of view that more people are working from home and I think the, um, you know, need for office space is more, is going to be more of a blend. Um, so I'm just curious, for office space that includes lab as well, are the, is there a different, um, measure that you use for lab space, um, to determine the amount of daily trips? I know that was a long diatribe just to get to that question, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, there are different land use codes that we could use. Um, typically those types of land uses, um, generate fewer trips because the lab space is, um, you know, per square footage, there aren't as many people in that space. Um, so right now, um, I'm not positive if they have an end user, but general office should cover, um, those site trips should cover anything, um, any type of office. And if there is a generator, um, that is more intense or less intense, then, um, I'm sure staff will realize that and, um, re-run the numbers or, um, request a, an update to that trip generation.
Okay.
And I think, uh, oh, I was going to say, I think that, that generally the traffic impact analysis is going to assume the most intense use, uh, from, from a traffic generation standpoint, um, when they run the analysis, in case that's what it is built out as, unless there is a known tenant. In this case, there is not a known tenant. And I think, um, of the uses allowed in the, uh, in, that we have allowed through the condition, uh, general office would be the most intense use from a traffic, traffic production standpoint, which is why it would analyze that way. And I did, I forgot to mention, I think Mayor Cowley was asking why this came in as one request and I just wanted to comment, uh, it's one parcel. Um, yes, it is split by Slater Road, but it is one tax parcel. Uh, so that's why it came in as a single request because it is a single piece of property. But, thank you.
Okay. So I just want to offer up that if the office space is a combination of lab and office, the number of trips is going to be less. And I understand that you are presenting a worst-case scenario.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thanks for that clarification, Mr. Gosh, about it being one parcel. I had a quick comment. Um, the 207 units, uh, that would not meet the MDR standard, correct? That is still an HDR?
I believe you are correct, yeah.
Okay. Um, so I just believe that, uh, a little bit too much right now, uh, is my thoughts on the southern portion. Uh, I do understand that office does, uh, add to the traffic. Um, kind of more willing to accept that, uh, not as willing to accept the residential, which adds a little bit less traffic, but stresses our other needs, uh, for infrastructure, parks, recreation, schools, et cetera. Um, so now, uh, those were my comments. Those, uh, I said most of my stuff earlier. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Ralph, followed by Mayor Pretam-Johnson.
Um, thank you. And, uh, Councilman Mayor, I, I did not mean to go twice before everyone goes around and speaks. I apologize for that. Um, yeah, I, Councilmember Garamella, it'd be very helpful if you could, um, put that, the data that you cited in the chat or get that to the council in terms of how many people were here during the day. And that's the point I was trying to make, but you said it so well, um, that, that if it's live, work and play, that's what the point I was trying to make is that I understand the concerns for schools and capacity, but, you know, if, if people are going to work here and we don't provide amenities for them to live, I feel like that's, you're getting your better bang for your buck. And so if we can get infrastructure improvements and do that, um, we still have the ability to control the, the growth of multifamily around more of the residential areas. So, um, but I want to thank Councilmember Garamella for being, uh, very articulate on that point. Um, and that's the point I want to make is, you know, live, work and play, I think every decision we make should be about what are we doing to recruit and retain people to work here? Um, what are we doing to provide more housing, particularly looking at workforce housing and then where it's applicable? And then, um, attracting maybe a younger demographic that this Dominion product does pretend. And then the recreational part, which is parks investments like developers will be making and there are different parks so that people can play here. So, um, I just wanted, that's my final point for the evening, but I do want to thank Councilmember Garamella for, um, the data that he shared. It was very helpful for me to hear that. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
So, I just wanted, just in the spirit of discussion, I just wanted to, um, echo, um, Councilmember Fender. She is one-hundred percent correct. Um, schools are a part of that infrastructure that we all worry about too, at one-hundred percent. Um, and I will tell you, if we could, if we had the authority, we would require, um, whatever we could for development to, um, to satisfy our, our school situation or to lessen the burden, um, or to lessen the, the impact on our schools. Unfortunately, we have no authority to do that. Um, and we've learned from our surrounding, our neighbors, um, surrounding us that have tried over the years to require development to, um, um, to either fund or have some impact on the school situation and, um, all those were shot down and, um, are not legal. So, um, I, I, one-hundred percent, if we had the authority, I would be doing something, um, about the school situation. Um, and, and that is a dilemma, I will, I will admit, that it, that is a dilemma. Um, I, I, and this is not a, this is just a reality. Um, the school district does not build schools until there is a need and there are childrens in, children in an area. Um, they don't build a school and then allow us to approve development to fill the school. It's unfortunately, or fortunately, or, again, not, it's just the way it is. I, maybe I shouldn't say fortunately, unfortunately, it's just the way it is. Um, the schools are always lagging behind, um, the students that come in. Um, so, um, again, if, if there was a way legally, we had the authority, I, I would do it in a heartbeat. I just wanna make that comment.
I am looking in chat for other comments. We've had some good, um, synergy in this discussion, uh, people talking about other people's comments and how they align with our values, which I think is really important. Um, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella.
I, I, um, yeah, again, I think, uh, for sure, you know, school is a part of infrastructure and I am not denying that at all because that is, has been the core every time we do it. And, uh, um, so, I just want, uh, people to understand that it is one of the infrastructure wings and the most important thing, because I have a kid too. Um, but, you know, when we keep talking about the road infrastructure, I think, uh, I'm very clear that the co- uh, commercial properties add more traffic.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to ask, um, Mr. Goesch, had there been any discussion of any lesser density residential models on these parcels? How did you arrive at the idea of high density here?
Uh, uh, Dominion didn't really look at it as, as a factor of high density versus medium density. The factors they were looking into is what, what we call, I guess, a, a garden top, garden tile apartment, um, and what that density, what those types of buildings fit into under the town's, um, regulations would be considered high density. Um, but, you know, ultimately, the density they were looking at was, was more of a function of the type of building they felt they could fit on the property. Um, and, you know, I, there's been a lot of discussion tonight about infrastructure and schools is one of them. I did wanna, you know, just reiterate that my client is willing to make a proffer to some sort, I mean, we discussed this early on in, in the context of, um, Councilmember Ralph's question. And if it, you know, schools is not out of the question, um, for that type of, of commitment, that is something that Dominion also would be interested in, in, you know, I guess I'm saying, we need some direction on that. I'm hearing a lot about school and I think Dominion would be open to making commitments in school system if that would be, if the town views that as beneficial, if there's a appropriate way to do that.
So, I, I, I would like to thank you all. I think that, you know, as we move forward and, and the town will grow and we, more people will come here. And I think that, you know, we are going to wanna deal with developers that will be flexible and will care about our town and will want to be a true partner to us. And it seems like you all are that type of developer and I, I appreciate that. Um, you know, I, so, I appreciate the fact that you'd said that two-hundred-and-seven was more in line, uh, partner-wise with, um, you know, with what the traffic study was based on or however we got to that number. Um, how far do you think you could reduce that number and still keep the project viable? How, how many apartments do we really need to have here, if any?
And, that's a, that's a, that's a fair question. Um, it's, I, it's not one that I can answer, uh, at this time. I, my thought process is it has less to do with the number of units and more to do with the number of buildings, um, and, and the efficiency of building a building. Um, so, I can answer that question. I, you know, I will say this, I, I'll go back to my client with that and have them answer it. I'm not sure they could answer it tonight either, um, but it's something that we can look at to see what, what financially would make sense for them, uh, on this site as far as number of apartments. Um, and, you know, to be, we have heard what, we have heard the feedback from, from council and, you know, the way I would characterize it is, it seems to be somewhat, somewhat uh, split on, uh, as to the, the appropriate number of apartments here. Um, I, I can say right now, what we're proposing is two-hundred-and-seven multifamily units and, and I couldn't tell you anything differently tonight. I'd have to get, have more time to...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I, I'm not suggesting that you should throw a number out tonight, uh, absolutely not. Um, but I, you know, I would appreciate if, if you would just give some, if you and your clients would just give some thought to that, to that question. I, you know, the, quite honestly...
I can, I'll promise you, we, we will do that. I can promise you that.
Okay. I mean, I just wanna say that, you know, that honestly, the fewer people that we're gonna be adding on this site, I, the better, the more disposed I'm going to be personally toward the project. So, you know, I, I mean, I understand that you, you know, that, I understand all the reasons why there has to be some residential there. I, you know, I understand that, but, you know, I hope you see my point of view as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robati. Okay, so, um, we've heard a lot of talk about schools. One thing that, uh, makes me recall is that Cedar Fork Elementary School, that area was, essentially, part of that, I believe, was donated as part of a larger project. So, I think that there are mechanisms for developers to assist in working with schools. Uh, as has been pointed out a lot, uh, many of our schools around here are capped, so there already is a need. There already are students who need more schools in the area, so it's not like, uh, Way County's waiting. Um, obviously, there is a need. Um, and I believe that, uh, since we are the tenth best place to live in America, uh, we will be attracting, um, all those people that were mentioned, uh, young professionals, families, corporations. Um, I don't think that we necessarily need to work extra hard, uh, even with developers such as this, who are willing to really bend over backwards to provide what they can to rush development. I believe that our development, uh, has already outstripped our infrastructure. Um, so, that horse I've, uh, been on for a little bit. So, unless there's any further comments, uh, we are expected to vote on this in two weeks. Public hearing will be closed as of midnight tomorrow night. Um, so if anyone wants to make further comments, please do that at publichearings@townofmorrisville.org or you can always send, uh, comments after that to our town council email. If you wanna make sure that they are, um, read in a timely fashion so that they can be digested, please try to do those the Friday before Tuesday meeting. Um, okay. Seeing nothing else, I think we're gonna move on from that item. Our next item is, uh, gonna be facilitated by Emily Langston, Planner Two. We're at item nine B. Ms. Langston.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, I'm talking about the rezoning of thirty-one oh-nine and seven oh-three Slater Road, which is a proposed rezoning to conditional office institutional. The council was briefed on this at the last meeting on February ninth. Um, just two quick updates first. Um, based on feedback from council, the applicants have removed a private recreation facility outdoor and private entertainment facility outdoor from the list of prohibited uses. So, if the rezoning were approved, those would be, um, uses that would be, are allowed on the site. Um, the second update is that, um, some additional information about the landscape buffer along Slater Road, um, was provided, um, on the agenda item updates, so I'm happy to answer questions about that, um, if you have them. And that's just information about, um, the buffer that is required along Slater Road and, um, the condition that the applicants offered prior to the previous meeting, which we already discussed briefly, to add some additional landscaping between, uh, the parking area and Slater. Um, happy to answer any questions about that. Those are my only updates. Um, and I believe Mr. Goesch wanted to speak briefly about this one as well.
Sure. I, I'll just offer that our team is available to answer questions. I know it's a long night, um, and you all have other things on your agenda. Uh, you know, we tried to address, uh, the mayor's concern by, by, uh, eliminating two of the prohibited uses as was suggested and, um, happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Do you councilmembers have any questions before we open and close the public hearing? Okay, seeing none at this time. Town Clerk Smith, were there any comments for the public hearing, please?
No, sir. There were no public hearing comments received for this item.
Okay. I've entertained a motion to close this public hearing as of midnight tomorrow night, February twenty-four. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
I'll make a motion to close this public hearing.
A motion on the table. Can I see a second and check? Um, can you please identify yourself?
Sorry, it's Ann. I can't chat.
Councilmember Robati with a second. Um, Town Clerk Smith, will you please, uh, take a roll call vote on the motion to close this public hearing as of midnight tomorrow night, February twenty-four? Councilmember Fender? Councilmember Garamella? Councilmember Ralph?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing as of midnight, February twenty-four, passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Uh, now is time for discussion on this item. I'm looking in chat for anyone who'd like to share their thoughts on this item. Seeing none at this time, I'll go ahead and say that, um, as I mentioned last meeting, I believe this is an appropriate and suitable utilization on this area of town. And seeing no others. Uh, as I noted before, the public hearing is open until midnight tomorrow night. Please feel free to submit any comments there or to towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org, which won't be part of that public record, but we will get a chance to read them and we do appreciate everyone's input. We'll now move on to, uh, action items, number ten. There is one action item on tonight's agenda, Resolution twenty-twenty dash three-eight-zero dash zero of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the land use plan adoption. Brad West, Senior Planner, will present the item, please. Mr. West.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, just a few update items for, uh, the land use plan. Um, we, uh, updated the future land use map, um, within the plan itself and then also created a separate, uh, sort of analysis map, uh, the flume, some call it, um, Attachment Six, and that will show that it's now a substantially lower-density map than what you saw at the last meeting. Um, so, again, we appreciate all the discussion and sort of parcel-by-parcel movement along that map, uh, and the compromises made, uh, at that last meeting. Um, we added the senior, senior living congregate care language that was requested for medium-density residential future land use designation. That can be found on page twenty-four. Uh, we added some workforce housing language for the town center subarea. Uh, that can be found on page seventy-five. Uh, we also wanted to highlight the workforce housing language already in the plan. Um, there's a whole section dedicated to that, affordability, uh, workforce housing. Uh, that is on page forty-one. Um, council asked us to, during the future land use map discussion, council asked us to reach out to, uh, property owners, uh, the Davis family in particular on Family Farm Road. Um, there was discussion whether or not, you know, we, we go with low-density residential, the future land use map, or medium-density residential. Uh, we have spoken to, uh, Mr. Bobby Davis, uh, who owns most of the property back there. Um, he has alerted us that he does, uh, intend to sell, uh, those parcels within the next five years or so, approximately. Uh, he envisions a medium-to-high-density residential development proposal for those parcels. However, uh, he does, uh, he is happy with his current lower-density zoning, I think it's very low-density zoning, uh, until he actually sells. Um, so, we're looking at maybe a five-year horizon there. Um, but in terms of the future, he, uh, is looking towards redevelopment. Um, he does, he wanted me to reiterate that, uh, he does not want a preemptive town initiative rezoning and, uh, staff informed him that that is not, um, intended at this moment. Um, uh, I think the last item we had was some discussion about the, uh, current, uh, airport overlay amendment delineation. Right now, uh, we show it sort of going across Watkins and NC fifty-four, taking a little zigzag down to, um, trans-air drive and sort of having trans-air drive as sort of the cutoff for any amended airport overlay, um, area. We heard that there is, um, a property owner who wished to, um, eliminate that zigzag and just make it a straight line and, and I have all this in a map, in case you don't know what I'm talking about. Um, and essentially, just kind of straighten it out from Watkins and NC fifty-four all the way over to the, um, eastern edge of town. Um, and, uh, council asked that staff, uh, propose, or bring that proposal to the FAA and get some input, um, from their end. Uh, we did show that to the FAA. Um, the FAA does not feel that that substantially alters our plan or what we presented to them back in December, um, and is fine with the adjustment. Um, so, just wanted to circle back on that. I think those are the main items that we were supposed to report back to you, but, um, happy to answer any questions about the plan itself.
Thank you very much, Mr. West. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I really appreciate staff's work over the last several weeks on many of the items that we mentioned during the land use review. Um, I would like to suggest that we, um, kinda put a framework around tonight's discussion. We do have many guests and we're excited that the, the MPEAC committee is joining us for a work session, but it was, um, advertised that would be around eight and I am very conscious that we're probably running thirty minutes behind right now. Would it be okay if we continue with the land use plan discussion for the next thirty minutes and then pause if we need to? If we're complete, that's great, but at least consider a pause and then, um, do the work session with our guests and then continue discussion after that, um, activity is complete.
That sounds like that would be, uh, a reasonable request. Uh, would any councilmembers like to, uh, share their thoughts on that, sort of as an opt-out? That we'll discuss this for thirty minutes, meet with MPAAC, and then, uh, circle back if necessary. Okay, so we'll finish whatever comments we're at, at approximately eight o'clock in order to start that part of our agenda, uh, knowing that we may, uh, circle back if we're not done discussing at that time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, looking in chat for anyone who'd like to make any comments, um, about what Brad said or about the land use plan or we are scheduled to vote on this... said or about the land use plan, or we are scheduled to vote on this tonight. So if you have any thoughts, um, about any further amendments or any thoughts, now is the time. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao, please.
Brad, I just want to thank you for all your work on this. And, um, one question I had was, maybe you already, you mentioned I had some issues with Wi-Fi for a minute and I couldn't hear, or maybe it's too early to ask, but the, um, the, um, the moving the line and all that stuff, is that, it didn't seem like the FAA's had a problem with that? So who would be involved in that process for Mr. Shaw's property? And if it's not the right time to ask, we can always come back to that later. I just wanted to-
Sure. No, I don't mind at all. Um, so I'm, I don't know if you can see this, but this is the airport overlay amendment, uh, map, uh, that's currently in the plan. Um, there was discussion at the last meeting on whether or not we should, uh, make it a straight line instead of this sort of zigzag that you see around Trans Air Drive. Uh, we know that there's a property owner there who, um, sort of disagrees with this alignment and would prefer a straight line versus the zigzag. Um, and they provided, I think they directly emailed some, uh, comments to you all about that. Uh, we did present this, uh, to the FAA, and, uh, Mr. Tommy Dupree, uh, with the FAA, um, informed us that it does not substantially alter the recommendations in the plan. Uh, I think our biggest concern is just trying to ensure that we maintain this area, um, as the current airport overlay A, just in case, uh, the RDU, uh, facility is expanded and there's a third runway, uh, sort of near the Briar Creek reservoir. So just try to be mindful of that.
So have we given clear direction that we want that line straightened or not? I'm afraid I'm unable to see the map given my computer right now.
Yep. I can bring it back up.
Well, can you tell me what page in the agenda packet?
So this, this was something we quickly put together, um, that probably won't be in the agenda packet, uh, as far as I know. This was something we had to quickly show the FAA. We have mentioned at the last meeting, sometimes we have, uh, difficulty getting quick answers, um, from various agencies, so we had to act fast, uh, and show them something. So this is a map that we're showing you now of the, uh, adjusted overlay, um, with a straight line versus what we have currently in the plan, which is best, than zigzag. So basically, uh, the Watkins Road, uh, NC 54 intersection or near that is where the overlay adjustment starts, and then it carries over to Airport Boulevard, and then it does a little zigzag down towards Trans Air Drive, all the way towards the eastern edge of town. There's a property owner who wants Trans Air Drive that does not wish to have that zigzag and wishes to be included in the airport amended area, Airport Overlay B. And so we proposed, you know, if we increase the Airport Overlay B area to the, to the dotted line shown on the map right now, uh, would FAA have an issue with that? And the FAA, to put it, you know, simply, does not have an issue with that, so. Uh, it is up to you as council whether or not you want to stick with what's in the plan, um, knowing there are use objections to any encroachment, uh, into this airport overlay area, or, um, amended as shown in this map, or, third option is you, uh, leave it in the plan and we can deal with it when it comes to you as a, um, rezoning and/or text amendment in the very near future.
So I'd love to hear, uh, any fellow council members' thoughts about which of those three options you'd like to go forward with at this time.
I, I'd like to just, if the FAA is fine with it, I would, I'm fine with moving the line, and really as to the other council members.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mayor Pretum Johnson?
So I, I would agree with Councilmember Rao. If it's something we are gonna do, um, let's do it now. Um, but, uh, but Brad, for, for you all, what is the best, um, path forward on this, on this particular item?
So, uh, we're, we're open to all three options. However, if you want to adopt the plan tonight and want this changed, you could just simply roll that as a condition of adoption. Um, so in the resolution, um, this could be included. Uh, but if you want to wait, uh, when we actually bring the, so this is just a recommendation, right? This is in the, the land use plan, so none of this is binding. Uh, we will be coming to you all with the actual amendment to the overlay itself. Um, and that will show the exact delineation of where it's going to go. Um, and we, we can bring that, uh, back as shown in the plan or with the dotted line, whichever you all agree to tonight. It really doesn't, we don't have a preference.
Okay, but if we, if we do it tonight, it needs to, in the motion would be, uh, needed to be an amendment?
Correct. Yeah, or a condition of the dotted, yeah.
Or a condition. I'm sorry, a condition to the resolution.
Something like that.
Got it.
Yep.
Well, I'd like to hear what, however, others want to proceed. I'm, I'm fine. I think our, our intent, at least for some of us, um, we're okay with the line being moved, but, um, I need to hear from everybody, if that's okay.
I'll recognize Councilmember Garamella for if I have a comment on that.
Yeah, I'm okay to move. Let's move forward. We have many other things to do. We already lost eight minutes.
Thank you, Councilmember Garamella. I also am fine with, uh, making the movement of that line a condition of our, uh, adoption either tonight or at a later time. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I'd just like to weigh in and say I'm okay with the line moving as well.
Thank you. Is anyone else interested in sharing their thoughts? We have, uh, consensus to move the line at this time. Okay. Seeing none, uh, you have direction to go ahead and, uh, make that, remind us that when we do adopt to make that one of the conditions, please. Um, I had, uh, another, I had two things that I wanted to discuss, um, well, three, actually. Uh, first, thank you very much for all the residents who have added, uh, additional comments. Um, we really appreciate all your thoughts, um, and your reiteration of, um, you being part of the process from the very beginning and sharing your ideas. Uh, I think we did some good work, uh, last time in finding compromise across the town. Um, there's two, uh, areas that I'd like to, uh, have the council discuss tonight that we didn't really address directly last time. Uh, one's with the Family Farm, which I think in the plan still shows is moving from the very low density to the medium density, unless I'm mistaken, Brad.
Yep.
If we were to adopt as-is, I would request that the council, uh, please weigh in on whether or not we can keep that low-density as his letter, the applicant's letter, actually indicated. Um, because, as I said before, I don't think there should be any rush to give the development community, um, the signal that we're looking to have more development sooner. Uh, 'cause once the change is made, I think that Mr. West indicated last time that there are developers calling. Um, so if we were to go ahead and do that, I'm afraid that that would, um, happen sooner than the five years, and I believe our infrastructure is not up to the task right now. Um, so that's my first of two. I'd love to hear back, and then I'll go on to the second thing. At this time, I'd like to, uh, recognize Councilmember Robati.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I have no problem with moving the line. I would also like to add to the areas for discussion. Um, I'm not sure if we have addressed the issue presented in the letter by, um, Mr. Ed White that was, uh, that was emailed to council this week. I know, Brad, you're, you're probably more conversant with his issue than I am. Could, um, if you could just briefly outline, uh, what the issue is and what side of that the land use plan comes down on, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Well, actually, actually, I think it's gonna get out of hand, and we'll get to eight before we get to anything. So if we could, um, take care of Family Farm Road, and then we can go ahead and talk about the Ed White, just to keep the, the meeting moving forward rather than having to go back and revisit things.
That's fine. I wasn't suggesting that he do it this second. I just meant before we vote.
Yep. I, I understand. Everyone has a chance to chime in about items that they want to make sure are addressed before we vote. Um, so if council would please, uh, let me know in chat, announce in chat if you have a problem with it staying as low-density. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, please.
I, I think I was the only person, because I think, um, Ann and Donna and I think Liz and this one already said, uh, MDR. And looking at the parcel and looking at the letter, um, obviously there's that difference between rezoning and the future land use, and, um, I'm okay going with MDR in that area because it eventually will develop at some point. Obviously, I'm not for, uh, high-density, that doesn't fit in there, but MDR, I'm fine.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Fender?
Well, I was in favor of keeping it low-density if that is what the owner of the current residents want.
Um, is that your interpretation from the letter?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, Mayor Pretum Johnson, please.
So, um, yeah, I, I, I think the last time we talked about this, I came down, um, I did not want high-density, but, um, was fine with medium-density. I think, and Brad, you, you correct me if I'm wrong. He, the property owner is saying to leave his underlying zoning as it is today. He does not want us to rezone it, but he does want it to be medium-density or high-density in the future. He, he is indicating that within the life of this land use plan, he anticipates either him selling, well, he'll sell the property and he'll develop it, or somebody will develop it. I, I am not in favor of high-density, but I think medium-density does fit in this area. That is what he is asking for.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Uh, he asked that, we just, he actually, uh, in his letter did state that he foresees this area developing as a medium, if not even high-density residential development proposal, uh, and he, he plans on selling his parcels to a developer to build that in the next five years, but does not want to move before then and does not want us to come in and change his zoning, um, before then. Correct.
Okay, thank you. And we are not changing his underlying zoning.
Correct.
I, I do think, uh, medium-density fits in the area, um, so I'm okay with that, but I, I would not be okay with the high-density.
Thank you, Mayor Pretum. Uh, so we have two people who are in favor of MDR. Um, so unless we hear more, uh, it will, it will stay as the low-density land use designation. Okay. Seeing none, uh, Brad, please make that low-density designation on the land use plan when we adopt, so that will be another condition. Um, now we can circle back to Councilmember Robati's question about the Ed White letter, and then I have another area that I'd like to look at, and feel free to, uh, comment in chat if there's other areas from other council members.
Yeah, so I, I think the, uh, question, um, was, uh, in regards to Mr. Ed White, a large property owner, and the McCrimmon extension areas' concerns, um, and the letter addressed to you all, and I can't remember exactly when that letter was sent, but it was fairly recently. Um, uh, my understanding, and then I, again, I, I speak with, uh, his broker, um, on almost weekly basis regarding updates to the land use plan, so I'm pretty familiar with what they're seeking. So, uh, it seems the, the main intent of that letter and then something that Mr. White's been saying all along and many other property owners are saying along, uh, McCrimmon is saying all along is that any change to the, uh, underlying zoning district, you know, if it goes from IM to BAC, needs to be accompanied by an airport overlay amendment. Because even if we did change this to, say, BAC, uh, you would still have this airport overlay amendment that, or overlay, uh, that would prevent any kind of residential development. Um, and so the, the two just need to coincide when we eventually do come back with a town initiative rezoning for the subareas, you know, that they coincide, they happen at the exact same time. Otherwise, in their opinion, it's not worth it. Uh, and so they just, uh, and then, and then, and to answer your other question, does the plan, uh, fall on that, that argument? Yes, we, that plan, the plan is, is presented today at least, aligns with, uh, what Mr. Ed White is requesting.
Thank you very much for that clarification. So when the rezoning for the subareas occurs, the airport overlay amendment will be prepared to also concurrently happen, um, which would, uh, address his concern.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Robati, was there anything else in that letter that you wanted to discuss?
No, there was not. Thank you.
Okay. Um, there were two other small areas in the bottom of what you called the FLUM, the F-L-U-M, that I would like to discuss. The Linda Drive across from Park Place and the Wilson Road. Uh, the Linda Drive, I believe, is slated to go from low-density residential, um, up to high-density residential. Um, and I think that, for many reasons, uh, even though it's on the east side of 54, and all intents and purposes, it is part of, uh, the west side, I believe that that would be, uh, there are already some current homes on there. I don't think that we want to give signal that we want more density at an area of town, uh, Chapel Hill Road right there, which, until it's widened, um, right now, that is a real pain point for our town. Um, so I'd like to just address those, uh, that smaller parcel first. Um, I'd rather it not go to dark purple at all. I'd rather it stay at low-density residential, and I'd love to hear, um, are you able to bring that up on the screen? Yes. So that's the purple one. That's right across from, uh, Park Place Shopping Center where the movie theater is. And I was just, uh, driving through there today. Um, and I think that that would be the appropriate place to leave the current residences and/or if they do redevelop, to have, uh, some space there rather than put in some really dense items. Love to hear any comments from the, my fellow council members on that. Okay. Um, so unless, uh, we hear some comments that we want that to either remain on the plan as going to high-density or maybe a medium-density, uh, okay. Mayor Pretum Johnson?
So I'm fine with, um, the medium-density designation. It is, um, it sits in with the surrounding neighborhoods, so, um, I think medium-density makes sense in both of these locations.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I'm sorry, I, I had this great comment that no one heard. Um, oh, gosh. So looking at this, um, I'm not convinced that high-density would be appropriate in the purple area, but medium-density seems more compatible with the adjoining properties. So I'm, I'm in support of a medium-density, um, designation there in the lighter lavender, um, section. I'm okay with a medium-density for consistency. So it just, um, because I, I, you can see the intensity around that area, it just, it's more like-for-like. So that's where I am right now. Thank you.
Okay. So we have, uh, two people who are interested in medium-density unless we hear some more. Okay. Councilmember Rao?
I agree with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson on, um, this one, medium-density. I apologize to the council, I'm having some technical issues on this end, so on the previous parcel, I, I'm, I'm sort of torn on the one, the one we just assumed that to keep it low-density residential. I was fine, my concern is with the property owner, that it, you know, for, that they would want it to be medium-density. So I don't know what the options are, if we can go back and make that medium-density or, you know, do we wait and go back to the maps of the back? Brad, if it's low-density now, would they have an option to come back and ask us for a rezoning?
Everyone will have to come back to ask for a rezoning. So.
Okay. Well, anyway.
So, so let me, um, just to clarify our process here, right now, let's go ahead and just talk about the one, uh, that I identified on Linda Drive, which is now presently from LZR to HDR. Um, I don't want to co-mingle the other one, 'cause I had some statements about that one as well. Um, so I don't want to have people, uh, voting on it without hearing everyone's thoughts. So does anyone have, so we- Um, so does anyone have, so we have two people who want the, uh, the dark purple to go to medium density instead of high density. Um, I'd like to revisit Councilmember Rao on that one item, the dark purple. Would you like to stay low-density? Would you like to go to medium density, or would you rather it be high-density?
Uh, to be, uh, in the last meeting, as I look back at my notes, I was fine with that being medium density. So I want to stay consistent on that and say medium density for that parcel.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Um, Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, medium density.
Councilmember Fender, please.
So I just want to make sure I'm looking at the land use plan map in our, um, in the draft correctly, that this, that parcel is designated right now as high-density. Is that correct?
Yeah, currently as proposed, it was going to high-density.
Okay. I would be in favor of having that medium density.
Thank you. Yeah, it's the one on the screen right now. Um, Councilmember Robati, please.
I would also be okay with medium density there. I don't want high-density.
Okay. Uh, Brad, I think you have clear direction on the dark purple parcels, which should now become lavender as a condition of our upcoming rezoning. Um, okay, now I'd like to speak towards, um, the lavender, which is more, uh, up on Wilson Road there and near Cary Parkway. There are a few homes on those existing parcels. Uh, some of that is actually open space that has not yet developed. I just turned by there earlier today. Um, and that, I think, is one of the few places left in town where actually you can have, um, some good spacing between the homes. Um, and I see how there is a lot of density around there, but I think that that would be a really nice spot. It reminds me of Preston Retreat along Davis Drive, where they have some good, um, sized homes on slightly larger lots. Uh, I think this would be an opportunity to do that, rather than to tear down a few homes to put in a lot of density. I think existing homes could coexist with new homes that are a little bit larger. Um, so at this time, we're talking about the, the lighter lavender there. Um, I'd love to hear from my fellow council members if they would like that to remain medium-density, to speak up. Otherwise, it will go back to its existing, uh, planned use of low-density. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, please. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Okay, uh, I'm okay with MDR there.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I am as well.
Okay, I'll, um, recognize you after a couple others. Mayor Pretend Johnson, please.
Yeah, I'm fine with MDR. Um, it sits in with the surrounding, um, development that's already out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender.
I'd like to keep it low-density.
Councilmember Rao, please.
I'm fine with MDR.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
My position hasn't changed. I'd like it MDR.
Okay, so we have, uh, four people who would like to, to be MDR, so that will, uh, remain as drafted as MDR.
All right.
We are really close colleagues. Um, does anyone have anyone el, anything else that they would like to address before we, um, put this to a vote? Because we could possibly do it before eight. Um, okay, maybe we should, uh, there's a suggestion that maybe we should take a break, and then we could readdress this, um, after we deal with MPAC, uh, because we're really looking forward to being fresh for that. So I think that that's a great idea. Mayor Pretend. We're going to take a ten-minute break and then come back at, uh, seven, I mean, eight oh seven. It's my clock says seven fifty-six right now. So please come back at eight oh seven, and we'll convene our meeting with our advisory, Education Advisory Committee. After we're done with that, we'll come back to the land use plan, make sure that everyone's, uh, comfortable with it, make sure there's no other areas that we wanted to address. Um, we've had some good discussion about it, and I think we'll be probably ready to vote. So please be back at eight zero seven. Thank you all. Okay, at this time, as discussed, we're going to go right into the work session and then circle back for the rest of our items. Um, so we're at item thirteen now. There is one work session on tonight's agenda, a joint discussion with the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee, MPAC. Um, so at this time, uh, I'd like to recognize Erin Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. Um, I will just speak very briefly, and then I will turn it over to the committee so that you all can begin your discussion. Uh, really quickly, just an update from where we left things in August at your joint discussion. At that time, the committee shared some accomplishments, work plan goals, uh, how their project interests aligned with their work plan, and had a discussion with council. And that has captured in attachment one in your packet. Minutes of that meeting discussion as an excerpt are provided as attachment two. Staff has categorized feedback from that discussion and shared with the committee so they could use that for their work as provided as attachment three. The committee members then used that documentation and continued to synthesize feedback, comments, see where action items could be developed and fit within their work plan. As we moved into 2021, any remaining work plan items from 2020 were transitioned into the new template, which is provided as attachment four. Um, using all of those items, the committee does have a topic list, uh, just to help them sort of move through the discussion with you all this evening. That's also provided in your Agenda Item Summary page. So at this time, I would turn it over to Lauren Quit-Greem. She is the chair for 2021, and, uh, she can facilitate discussion from there.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Um, and thank you, council, for having us. We are very excited to be here. We've been looking forward to this meeting. Um, we want to also just thank you two for including the K through three class size issue on your advocacy agenda. Um, we really appreciate that you've been paying attention to what we've been discussing and, you know, honoring the resolutions that we've come up with. Um, I just also want to just draw attention again to the accomplishments that we've had over the past year. We have had several resolutions. Um, we also have created a format to disseminate knowledge and information from Wake County to the town of Morrisville. We've even, excuse me, created a subcommittee, um, that has gotten together to come up with a plan of what information will be shared and how we'll share it at the meeting. Um, and thank you too to, to, um, my committee members for doing that. And then we also, uh, as you all know, created a survey, and it closed recently. We are in the process of analyzing that information, and we will be discussing that information at our next meeting. And just as a reminder, the survey was about, um, remote learning and also mental health needs for the town of Morrisville. Um, and if you have any questions that, I'm hoping that we can, about the survey, I'm hoping we can kind of say that to the end, since we have a lot to get through, um, tonight. And then, uh, we also had last meeting a presentation from, um, some social workers through the Wake County School System, uh, public school system on the community resiliency model, which goes by CREM. Um, and we're hoping that, you know, we can continue to, as a committee, come up with other additional, you know, opportunities to learn what's available in North Carolina and our local community to help, you know, connect the town of Morrisville residents if they're interested in this information. Um, and now I wanted to go into transitioning into some of the questions that we had as a committee. Um, so after each section, if it's okay with you all, I'm going to go ahead and just stop so we could have some discussion. Um, we first wanted to, uh, something that's come up consistently is how our committee can collaborate with other committees. Um, for example, the Planning and Zoning Committee. We wanted to, we were hoping, I guess, that we could talk about tonight about how we can all send consistent messaging about our goals regarding, um, land use and school development. Um, and we did not know if, how you all would feel about how, about that consistent messaging and how we can actually disseminate that information to the commit, uh, to the community, the residents of, of Morrisville.
Okay, I'm looking in chat to see if anyone wants to chime in. Um, I think that just overarching, um, your committees generally make recommendations to us as a group, and then we make decisions and disseminate information after that. Um, the fact that you are sending lots of great information to us, um, that's public record. So anyone who's interested in that, um, is welcome to it. And there may be a way to make sure that's a little bit more accessible, maybe on our website, so that people who are interested in knowing your work can have a little bit more visibility into it without having to search for it as much. About the idea of, uh, liaisoning with the other subcommittees, uh, the other commit, citizen committees in town, resident committees, I like that idea a lot. Um, and then if you were to come together and make a recommendation from both of you together, that would hold even more weight. Um, so I'd love to hear my other council members' thoughts on that. Uh, I'll first recognize Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, and, um, thank you, Lauren, for being here this evening. Um, looking forward to, uh, your presentation. Um, but I think that is a wonderful idea, um, for your committee to, um, especially meet with the Planning and Zoning Board and, um, maybe come to understand each other's com, committee's, um, concerns and, and then also come up with a consistent message between the two of you. I don't, I mean, it's kind of hard to do, um, some sort of interaction, uh, right now. Um, but I would encourage some, some ideas there to have, especially Planning and Zoning Board and, and MPAC, to have some sort of coordination together. So that's all I have, TJ.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Mayor Pretend Johnson, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
So I too want to thank, um, all the members of MPAC for being with us tonight, and thank you for your dedication and your commitment to the town of Morrisville and to our families and our children. Um, so I, I think, uh, I think I need to think this through a little bit more about how to collaborate and communicate with other advisory committees. I think the mayor said it right in the beginning. Um, the role of each of our committees is to advise council. Um, and, and not to say that you don't, um, have, um, knowledge of other committees and y'all, nobody should work in a silo, that's for sure. But, um, I think the, the goal here is for you all to, um, bring recommendations up to council and then for council to act on them. So I want to make sure that that is, um, you know, still the, the process that we're going to use moving forward. The, um, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I can see, I can see a lot of opportunities with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, but I, I guess I would want to know, um, what exactly y'all are thinking about, um, i- in that arena.
Oh, that's a great question. Um, so I think that this goes more along the lines of what the survey results might depict and us potentially coming to you all with, um, I can tell you right now that some of the survey results had some recommendations that may be appropriate for, um, another committee, but of course, we would bring that to you all, um, as a plan. But I think that that's where that, I hope that answers your question. Um, that was where that was coming from.
Uh, anything else, Mayor Pretend?
Thank you, Lauren. No, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank everybody for their time tonight. It, I see that there's been quite a few meetings that the MPAC committee's been working, uh, you know, through. Um, and regarding working collaboratively or, or touching, you know, um, other committees and working on a shared goal, I think I would first like to better understand the output of the survey and the recommendations from the committee. And then as a council, we would identify if there's a, a shared activity that has, um, a goal and a, a timeline associated with it. I, I'm not in favor of having a recurring, um, kind of touch point between two committees at this time because as we've designed the structure that committees report to the council, and I, and I want to keep that right now intact before, um, we, you know, start doing a lot of cross, um, communication. Because I'd like you to be successful, and we're very, very interested in your work and, and your recommendations. And then once we have that, then we can make, um, a better informed decision. So at this time, I'd like to just keep it status quo and then later on evaluate when we have more information. So thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
No, I, I agree, because I think, uh, the education committees, you know, when I was looking into this committee, my thought process was how can we leverage this committee to the public good? You know, um, especially, I say, where the collaboration would be good is certainly the Parks and Recs. Uh, we have, you know, the Youth Leadership Council and also the Stormwater. So I'm kind of looking, uh, at the survey because during this COVID time, you know, like, my son is a high schooler, and he's looking for voluntary hours. So how can, you know, uh, education committee look at, you know, partner with, you know, with the recreation, uh, Parks and Recs or Stormwater? There's several opportunities, and I think if you guys can give those kind of recommendations to the council, and if we think that's the best way to move forward, I think there's, uh, obviously, uh, appetite to, you know, take your recommendation, uh, to them, uh, from the council. And, um, mental health is a good, but I, I'd like this committee to work more towards from a family point of view, a kid in the house, how, how can we help? Um, because that is, I think, pretty critical. Um, and that would help, a lot of the families I've talked to, you know, uh, around this neighborhood and other neighborhoods is literally, they want a place where their kids can go safely or do stuff. That's all from me now. But thanks for all the good work.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to thank, um, the citizens for being involved with this committee. And I want to give a shout-out to, uh, my colleague, Councilmember Sathy Garamella. Um, for the public, I just want everyone to know that he led on this idea. He brought this to the roundtable, he got the approval. Um, he's the kind of guy that gets things done. He gets a lot done, and he never takes the credit. So I'm going to, you know, basically say that, that, you know, we, we're here today because of him and this council that supported schools. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to him on that. Um, the second thing I want to say is I'm all in favor of council working with these committees. I, I really, over the years, I felt that sometimes committees work on their own, but it would be helpful, uh, as Morrisville grows, to it would be helpful, uh, as Morrisville grows, to obviously have maybe liaisons and, you know, council, maybe more joint council meetings with the advisory committees, so we can define a shared vision and shared goals and really harness our focus. For example, when Councilmember Garamella brought this idea, he, you know, we, we had discussions about focusing on different areas, like, uh, the quality of education, uh, STEM skills, uh, the, um, you know, skilling of our workforce, uh, working with, uh, you know, Wake Tech, uh, for our kids and our grandkids. And then also, um, you know, in addition, uh, now that, in the pandemic, the effect of remote learning and its psychological impact on the kids. And the other things that we focused on, which is assignments in schools. The final thing I'll say is that I, what I would like this committee to do is to make, and maybe this is already happening, but I would like to see a, a, a focus of working with our staff to communicate to our council the decisions that you're making in terms of advice and guidance. I'm seeing too many, and it might just be me, but posts on social media sites and facts going all over from, you know, from people that are on the committee, people that are not on the committee. And I think that makes it very hard for the board to make very solid concise decisions, because we're all in this together. And I know there's a lot of frustration about schools, and there's certain things we can control and certain things we can't control. So moving forward, I would like to see us revisit how we can work together to have better focus, better communication, so we can have a better impact on the schools. I'm not saying that, that that's not being done, but I think we all could get better, and hopefully we can put together a process where that can happen. Thank you.
So to, um, Ms. Quick Graham's point, uh, how do you feel about collaboration amongst, MPAC and the other resident advisory committees, sir?
Oh, yeah, I feel, I'm in support of that. Sorry, I didn't mean to get off track. I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of, of that kind of collaboration. I think it's great, and, um, I think, I don't know how we would do it, whether we would do more joint meetings, or, uh, I think it would make it so much better, and we can develop these shared goals every quarter and then say, you know, these are the things we wanna do. So I'm in favor of that, and, and, and mayor, like for all the committees, I think it's a, it's a good thing.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rabadi, please.
I, I'm definitely in favor of reducing the number of silos among the committees. I think that the more that they work together, the better. I also wanted to commend you all on, I think it's great that you, you know, that you are amenable to a little bit of scope creep. Like, I loved the, um, the discussion of the reading program and the, um, the fact that you were gonna work with the library to do similar things. And I think that, you know, I think that the holistic view of education that you're taking is, is commendable. I really support that. Thank you.
So I believe everyone had an opportunity to chime in. I also think that it's good to empower our committees as much as possible and to cross-pollinate and have them talk about different things, uh, especially insofar in the zoning board and land use, uh, is so important for how the schools are being overstressed. And as it was said, we don't have many levers. And one lever we can do is control development, and I think that, um, Planning and Zoning Board, uh, and would benefit from hearing from you, and you would benefit from hearing why the decisions they are making are happening as well. So I think that that is a real point where things can change and happen. At this time, I'd like to recognize, uh, Mark Dixon from the committee.
Hey, thank, thank you, uh, Mayor Colley. I think, I think one of the, uh, maybe the, one question that comes up is about the silos. And if we keep it like the status quo and we provide information to the town council and the other committees provide information to the town council, does the town council send information down to the other silos? Is the PDB watching the MPAC, uh, meetings? I'm gonna say probably not. We may be watching other meetings amongst the MPAC members to try to get a pulse on what's going on, but I think that's one of the concerns, is how, how does our work get transferred to the other committee, uh, the other committees? That's really just, um, maybe I'm not asking for an answer there, but there's a mechanism, I think, that could be improved. Thank you.
And that makes very good sense. In the very beginning, uh, we used to not necessarily ask about how, uh, students are being, uh, affected by rezonings and potential. Now we ask that question and staff is able to provide it, given a slightly different formula than Wake County. So I think, um, making sure the other committees all are aware of different concerns of the different committees, I think that that's a really important step. Cause there are, uh, people who, some people are more paying attention, more, some people are in their silos, and everyone's doing what they can for the best of the town. I think everyone's, I believe everyone's had their turn, so, uh, we'll recycle, and I'll recognize Councilmember Rabadi, and then maybe we can back to Lauren Quick Graham and see, uh, how she feels about what she's heard. Ms. Rabadi.
Uh, I just wanted to briefly say that maybe it would be a good idea if once the, um, once each committee had defined what their goals for the year are and their, you know, their vision statement, their mission, maybe all the committee heads could get together and have a meeting and share that information. That might be a way to start either, you know, half, at the half-year, every quarter, or whatever it takes, just to kind of keep each other in the know. That's all I have. Thank you.
That could be very good information sharing, and I'm sure staff will, um, be able to provide some good, uh, options, um, to try to meet these needs if council does indicate. And it seems like council is indicating that they would like to see some kind of path forward for some, uh, cross-pollination amongst our committees. Ms. Quick Graham, Chair, Chairperson?
Thank you. I just wanna also clarify that we are, as a committee, very clear on the process that we come to you all, and I'm sorry if I misspoke. Our plan, uh, at our next meeting, which happens to me next week, is to start talking about the survey results, and then to develop based on any patterns or themes that we've identified, um, we're gonna discuss ha- possible solutions to submit to you all. And we're very, we're looking forward to that, because there was a lot of great results. We also wanted just to, to transition to talking about land, and I know that that seems to be...
I apologize, uh, Chairperson. Before we move on to the next subject, I wanna recognize Mayor Pretem Johnson, I think has his comments still on the last.
Oh, excellent.
And that's just from chat. So, uh, Mayor Pretem, please.
Oh, tha- thank you, that's fine. Uh, Lauren is, is, is clarifying some more, so that's really helpful. So, um, I appreciate that. I think the only, the only thing I would, um, wanna make sure that all the committee members are aware of is that, um, um, you know, this is a relatively new committee, obviously, for, in the past, what, eight, year and a half? But the other committees that have been in existence far longer and are, are, are many years established, um, they do advise council, um, and council will also send items back to those committees, too. Espe- and I've, the one that comes to mind, um, of course, they all, we've done it with all of them, but the one that comes to mind, um, right away is the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. We will often ask them to weigh in on topics and, um, you know, plans, and, so it does go both ways. And it, it's really important that the committees all, um, kind of funnel up to, um, to council, because in the end, it's ultimately council's, um, responsibility to make sure, um, everything is working and is, um, connected and, um, that we're, we're aware of everything that's going on. But I think that's what Lauren is saying right now and, in her comments, and, and that's just fabulous.
Thank you. Back to you, Chair Quick Graham.
So, um, we also, and like, this goes back to the collaboration piece, but a general theme that has consistently been discussed in our meetings is, um, land. And, um, one of the questions that we just generally had was, are there viable land, available land opportunities to build new schools for Morrisville students?
So I could sort of generally address that. I think that staff is in much communication with Wake County schools about that. If there's ever questions, I think that, uh, staff has actively shared parcels that we believe might be viable. As you know, the Breckenridge Parkside area, um, that wouldn't have happened without a lot of, uh, urging and nudging. Uh, so if there are other areas of town, I'm confident that staff is making sure that Wake County knows, um, and that Wake County, uh, does not wanna be put in a position, uh, where they have to bid against people or that their interests might be known. So we generally don't know about those purchases until after the fact. I'm not sure if that addresses your question, but I'd like to recognize Mayor Pretem Johnson at this time.
So I, I, I'm gonna agree with the mayor. Typically, these kinds of conversations are not out front, um, and for, as he said, for a very good reason. These are conversations that are happening all the time in the background, and, and we as a council don't talk about land purchase ourselves, um, until, you know, tho- that those are closed session conversations. So we don't, we don't talk about them until, until the kind of, the deal is done. So that, that's really important.
And I'd like to recognize, uh, Ms. Das Akasetti.
Um, first of all, I would like to thank Councilmember Garamella for his insight in, um, when he first, this committee is his brainchild, so I'd like to thank him for that, for his great leadership qualities. I've got a question, and I, I, I cannot seem to get a direct answer. How much, um, influence, so if Morrisville as a municipality has influence over Wake County Public Schools, to get schools built here, how much weightage do we carry? Or if any at all?
I believe, uh, each of us has worked really hard to develop good relationships with the Wake County School Board members. So to that point, I think they are definitely within our circle of influence. And I believe that, that we have a number of other residents who have also similarly, uh, built up those relationships. So I, I think I'm proud of our work, and I think the fact that yours is just about the only committee in Wake County, I believe, addressing this, uh, shows how serious we are about trying to make sure that the needs of our residents are met. And I know that, uh, our school board members are very aware of that. The ones that serve us directly, Ms. Carter and, uh, Mr. Hagerty, and the other nine, the other five of me. I will, uh, does that answer your question adequately? I'm trying to not be indirect, uh, but that's about as good as I can give.
I'm thinking about what more can we do to have more influence over Wake County Public Schools?
Okay. We demonstrated a lot of influence a couple of years ago with redistricting, and we got a lot more proximate school assignments. So I think that when an issue does come up, when our residents become very active and we are able to advocate more directly on their behalf, uh, sharing their stories about how important it is for our students to get education nearby and to be able to participate in PTAs and after-school activities. If there's any particular items, like happened a few years ago, um, we are hoping that this committee will be at the forefront of identifying them and doing surveys or giving us the information that we need to go right to our school board members and advocate on your behalf. So perhaps the survey will show that there are some pain points that we can try to address proactively, um, cause we, we don't, we can't fix what we don't know. And at this, uh, does that help at all, Ms. Das Akasetti? We're, we're kinda looking to you to, um, help us understand what more we can do, cause that was a successful effort in the past.
It, it does, but we have to bear in mind that redistricting is not a new thing. It just didn't happen a couple of years ago. It's been happening for, I've been living here for over sixteen years, and Breckenridge has been reassigned about six times, and we've ordered six times. So it's nothing new. I mean, it, it keeps, it's, redistricting is something that keeps occurring and reoccurring.
Yep, you protect it every three years. And like was mentioned, we don't have control of Cary, and they're rezoning out to the west. With the one lever that we do have, besides our influence, is our land use decisions. So that's why I think it's important that you guys have good, meaningful discussions with our, with us and with our Planning and Zoning Board and with our staff. Share the stories and, and give us data. With data, we can go to, uh, the county board and really work with them. So we'll move on from that one, cause that's part of why we're, we're here talking tonight, is to figure out what, how we can work together to do the best for our students. I would like to recognize, uh, Member Sarah Fuller with her hand raised. Cannot hear you.
Sarah, you're muted. I, I can see her talking, but we can't hear her.
Okay, and I'm looking in chat for, uh, other council members who wanna chime in, their thoughts as well. We want this to be a meaningful discussion in both directions. Okay, uh, until we're able to resolve Ms. Fuller's issue, I might wanna pass it back to Chair, uh, Quick Graham. Oh, sorry, can I, uh, recognize Councilmember Rabadi, please?
Thank you, Mayor. To Vidya's point, I, I wonder if it would be productive for your committee to invite some of the school board members, um, to maybe broker a meeting between school board members and council. You, you know, the school board members that really we don't, we don't get to talk to all the time. And maybe we could all sit down and just have a conversation about Morrisville and, you know, how we're getting squeezed on every side by Development and Cary and our needs for schools. I mean, I don't think we, I can't recall it, since I've been on the council, we've really done that. And that might be, that might be the start of an effective working relationship that we could expand. I mean, I think we all have good relationships with individual school board members, but, you know, maybe sitting down to talk to, you know, sitting down for all of us to talk would be, would be something that, you know, that could be fruitful. Thank you.
That's, I think that's a great idea. Councilmember Rabadi, I think it's been a couple of years, but I believe that Cary has in the past, I may be mistaken, but they've at least had meetings with full Wake Commissioners or the school board, I'm not sure which it was, but the town of Cary, um, was able to do that. So that might be something that if staff was able to have, uh, our council meet with the Board of Education and maybe the Chair and Vice Chair of this committee, that could be a meaningful discussion. So that, that's a very good idea, and I believe it would be great if staff could look into that. Uh, Councilmember Fender.
Well, I was just gonna reiterate that before, uh, the pandemic, we had talked about just that, for the town council to have a meeting with, um, school board members and possibly, um, some of the Wake County Public School staff. Her name escapes me now. The, the two individuals that came to talk to the town council about the, um, special use permit for the, for the mobile classroom, um, we talked about exactly, you know, having a, a collaborative meeting with the school board, um, before, before COVID, so I'd like to still do that.
Okay. Excellent. Now back to you, Chair Quick Graham.
Great, thank you. Um, that actually is a good segue into one of the just questions we had, which is the question comment about, um, the special use permit for the temporary classrooms. Um, you know, what's council's idea, ideas around that? What are their ide- what are y'all's ideas around that? Is it possible to draft a change to eliminate those, or?
Yeah, I, I'll chime in that I believe that that would be a good idea and heading in the right direction. And it's, we have a lot of UDO changes coming down the pike. It's a matter of whether or not the council would be interested in fast-tracking that one and just making it happen. I would be in favor of that. Looking for other council members in chat. Mayor Protam Johnson.
So yeah, I, I, I believe, and you all can correct me if I'm wrong, but when this issue recently came out about these special use permit at Cedar Fork and council chose to give them an open-ended special use permit for the, for the trailers. I, I believe we all said at that time that this was something we would support, that we were all in agreement, and again, you all correct me if I'm wrong, I'm talking to my, my fellow council members, that we would be amenable to staff changing and eliminating this from our code. I think I'd like to hear from staff, because they're, they're doing a couple of other updates right now to our code. Tree preservation, parkland payment in lieu. There, there are some other really significant changes. Not that this wasn't, this one is insignificant, but I think in the, in the scheme of things, this one is not going to rear its head soon, whereas the others need to get done. So that would be my only comments about fast-tracking anything.
Yeah, and I believe this one might be a topic that we are going to discuss during retreat as well. I'd like to recognize Planning Director Stiegel at this time.
Okay, yes, we could absolutely talk about that more at retreat if the council thinks that that would be appropriate. We've discussed it at the staff level and had thought about working it into some of the amendments that we're potentially bringing forward to you, but we could talk about that more this weekend.
Okay, so that is definitely on our radar, Ms. Quick Graham. And as Mayor Protam Johnson did mention, we are very glad to make it very easy going forward for Cedar Fork, but we understand that there might be other needs given the growth in our region. So hopefully we'll be discussing that a little bit further. And I think we've heard from a lot of residents that they are very interested in having that moved and changed. So back to you for your next topic.
Great, and we, we have been noticing in various meetings that there's been some discussions about Durham County, Durham County schools. And we just, we wanted just to ask if there were any accurate numbers of how many people are in Morrisville that vote for, in terms of Morrisville elections, that go to Durham County schools and how, you know, how that could impact our committee? Because we are concerned, I think, Wake County, as you all probably have observed, just focusing on Wake County alone is, is a large task. And we just, we didn't really know where you all stood on Durham County and if really that is really within our scope of, as a committee.
Okay, I would like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson and then maybe ask if staff has any insight as to those numbers. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. You may be on mute, I cannot hear you.
I do that so that you don't hear a cat meowing or a dog barking, so I do apologize. But I do have information. Since my comments on January 26th raised such interest by a member, Committee Vice Chair O'Connor, I did do my due diligence and research relating to a Durham County resident. So just to be clear, Morrisville sits in both Durham County as well as Wake County, with the majority of the land being in Wake County. We have students going to Wake County schools that live in Wake County and we have students that live in Durham County that go to Durham County schools. In fact, we have residences in the District Four, if you will, that's my district, that most of those residents are in apartments. And there are also a small number of single-family homes in Kits Creek that are technically in Durham County and they go to Durham County schools as well. So by the numbers, I wanted to share with you some information that I gathered from public records from the Durham County Board of Elections. And it is registered voter data, which is, you can check my number, but we should be aware of the fact that not every person that lives in a residence is eligible to be a voter, either through legal constraint, citizenship. There's just many reasons why people might not be registered. So with that, in Durham County, those that have a Morrisville mailing address, which is the most deceptive ever because it does not mean they live in the town of Morrisville. They just have a mailing address. There are 3,847 individuals that are registered with a Morrisville mailing address. Now, if you want to look specifically of those registered in the town of Morrisville with the Durham County designation, there are 84 individuals that are currently registered to vote for the Morrisville town elections, but reside in Durham County. What is very interesting to me is that as of 2017, there were only seven registered voters in Durham County that lived in the town limit. But starting in 2018, they added 15. In 2019, they added 12. And in 2020, they added 50 new registered voters. So my insight is that we are seeing a trend and it is growing. And we have approved projects that are within the town of Morrisville that have Durham County location. It is very difficult for, I guess you would say, anybody to get a successful revision of the county line. Back in 2017, 2018, when some of these projects were being considered, there's an apartment that actually sits on both county lines, kind of like our Walmart. And we did ask staff to inquire to Durham County if we could move the line so that the building could reside in Wake County, and it did not go very far. So I know there's interest by some of the residents in Kits Creek to have their county line moved, but it is very doubtful that we would be successful, especially when the land has developed. It's a lot more tricky, difficult. There's a lot of barriers to making that happen. So again, so just to give you the number for demographic purposes, we have 22 registered voters in District Two with the majority of them in the 26 to age 40 range. We have 62 registered voters in District Four with the majority of those residents in the 26 to 40 range potential. But you can't be for sure that those would have school-aged children, those households. So I really hope that that begins to answer your question about the demographics in the area, knowing that there's probably more residences to come in the near future. And because of that, that is why I raised my hand and asked for the committee to give me feedback on Durham County consideration. Because of course, I know that all families in Morrisville are important. And we, we have shared challenges with classroom size advocacy and so forth. And to meet the needs of all Morrisville families would include both counties. So thank you.
That is a lot of data. Thank you very much for gathering all that on our behalf.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Garmola.
Yeah, to the Chair, Lauren, you know, I think I want to correct when you said how many voters are in Durham county who live in Morrisville. For me, I want to ensure like this particular committee does not cater to just voters here. You know, we have 28,000 people approximately, out of which actually voters are minorities. There are more people who are residents who are not voters. And with Vicky's numbers, you know, I have a simple, you know, we all know like with the common cause, like No Child Left Behind. So immaterial, if it is one kid or more than one kid, if that, if there is a need and something really, you know, that Durham county is doing that affects that particular kid or a group of kids or families, I think it is important for us to recognize that and, you know, advocate for that. So, so that's what I would say.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mark Dixon and then back to Chair Quick Graham. Mr. Dixon.
I think I saw Beth Benjamin raised her hand before me, so if she's got to come, I'll let her go first.
Thank you very much, Ms. Benjamin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mark. My question is, wouldn't it be, instead of basing it on voters, wouldn't it, shouldn't we base on whether they're paying Durham County taxes versus Wake County taxes? Because the taxes are what pays for the public schools. Is that not correct? Or does anybody know?
I, I do. This is Vicky. So, so we assess those families that live in the town of Morrisville, Morrisville city taxes or Morrisville town taxes. So everybody pays Morrisville taxes. So whether you live in Durham or Wake, will, you know, Durham County residents pay Durham County taxes and Wake County residents pay Wake County taxes, but everybody in the city limits pays Morrisville taxes.
So we represent everyone in Morrisville, but they may be, they are paying their taxes to the schools their children go to, and that's how that works. So I guess I would, I would say that if there's a big issue for our residents, if it is affected by Wake County schools or Durham County schools, leave it to you guys to decide where your bandwidth is and how you can best address the needs of as many of the residents as you can. Also, trying to leave none behind. Just because someone lives in Durham, they're still our neighbors and we still represent them. We do as a council, you do as a group, as a resident committee. So I'd, that statement, I'd like to pass it to Mr. Dixon and then Ms. Quick Graham.
Okay, thank you, I'll be quick. I might have missed it, I was hoping to hear how many students in Morrisville go to Durham County schools. I don't know if that is available, but, but to, to, I guess, the end, the end game there is, would we want to seat somebody that lives in that category of, you know, housing to join our MPAC? I know that there's, the way that the districts are boundaried, but maybe there's an exception that could be had, have somebody join the MPAC from that particular group, is all my comment.
We can add that as a question on the applicant questionnaire. Right now, we make sure that there's at least two people from each of the districts. So we do have some wiggle room there. And then as a group, we can make sure that if someone does apply, if we feel that's important. And we'd love to hear from your group if you think that's important as well. You can make the recommendation that you want one, a person of that demographic. Ms. Quick Graham?
Thank you, and I apologize. I think we're just using voting as an example. I think we as a committee agree that there's a lot of issues with voting. I think another point, though, that we discussed as a committee was that our charter only says Wake County public school system and does not address Durham County schools. And so that would be something that I want to just bring up to the council as well.
Okay. We're going to recognize Vice Chair Patsy O'Connor after hearing from any council members who want to chime in on that. If you guys would like to recommend mending the charter to include Durham, if you feel that that would be sufficient and you want to put some ideas behind why that would be and bring it forth to the council, that would be great. Would be my answer to that. Mayor Protam Johnson has a comment.
So council, council has a retreat this weekend and one of the items on our agenda to retreat weekend, and I forget where it falls, is to actually talk about charters of all our committees. We're going to revisit all the charters. So I think this is probably a topic that's important for council to talk about at retreat this weekend. And I would, I would say, let's leave it for this weekend unless you all, maybe what, what I should say is if you all have thoughts on that, and by you all, I'm sorry, I mean the MPAC committee members, weigh in now and let us know your thoughts or send us an email because we'll have this conversation this weekend.
Thank you. Vice Chair O'Connor, please.
Actually, I, I appreciate that, that comment a lot, Mayor Protam Johnson, because I think it is important to note, and I, I definitely appreciate Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson sharing the numbers of individuals who reside in Morrisville yet live in Durham County. I think it is incredibly helpful to know that it's 84 individuals. And getting back to Mayor Colley's point of what is the bandwidth of our county, I mean, I think that's important to note, that's 84 individuals. We're not talking students, so obviously the number would be far less than 84. Now, I have recognized that that number is growing. And maybe in the future, I would suggest this part get added to the charter. But right now Durham Public Schools, I think it is important to note that it's Durham Public Schools, not Durham County Public Schools. They don't have the same issues with overcrowding as the Wake County Public Schools do. Plus, we have far more people in Wake County right now that reside in Morrisville that have these concerns. So I guess I would love to back Mark Dixon's point that perhaps, you know, MPAC would benefit from having one of those 84 individuals on our committee. But right now, I think the numbers are so low. I wouldn't just, I wouldn't suggest that we ignore them if there's a problem, but we haven't heard that there are any problems there. Those people are fairly happy. They've got the traditional schools and they're not overcrowded. So that's just my two cents that I wanted to make sure to add.
Okay, thank you. I'll recognize Councilmember Fender and then I have a comment as well. Ms. Fender.
I'll have a comment that could be a question. You know, I, I've heard a couple of people say the number of the students that are in Durham County but in Morrisville is growing, but is it really? I mean, how much more is it going to grow? I know the area of Durham County and Kits Creek is not growing anymore. I think the other area that's in District Four is apartments. I don't know what the status of those apartments, if they're already built and people are living in them, but there's going to be a finite number eventually of where those areas are going to be built out and they're only going to grow by so much. It's not going to be like the rest of Morrisville and how that, the rest of Morrisville is still got some room to grow, to grow. But I just really question, how much more is, are the students that are in Durham County really going to grow?
And so is staff in a position that they could tell us according to their modeling that there's going to be more residents in those Durham County areas of the town of Morrisville?
This is Michelle. So just anecdotally, I don't have data or evidence necessarily to share with you at this time, but when you look at what's in Durham County, it's a limited amount of area. Right now with our current zoning map, you know, that looks like there's one, you know, undeveloped parcel there that's MDR, where you might get some additional residential. I don't know what the future land use plan designation there is without looking a little bit closer. Um, I don't know what the future land use plan designation there is without looking a little bit closer, but it really is limited, um, when you start getting on the north side of the village that's in Durham County.
Okay. So, um, and as hopefully everyone knows, our resident committees are open to the public and always looking for, um, public input. So you don't necessarily have to have someone officially on your committee to hear from them. Uh, it was my understanding that they were having some problems with buses and their buses, Wake, uh, Durham County buses would not come in and cross over the Wake County line to pick them up. Um, so that was one small issue that I don't know if the committee needs to take on or if that's something that, um, those residents can deal with through the town or something like that. Um, but that was just something I want to share that there, one issue did bubble up and I'm not sure if it'd actually be your committee's role to try to address that because that's more operational in any case. Um, so I think to wrap on this, unless you guys, your group has already had the discussion and you want Durham County included in your charter or if you send an email before the retreat, um, I don't see that we would add it on our own dime without input from you guys on that. And I'm looking in chat to see if I'm misreading that from any of my fellow council members. Okay. So Chair Quick Graham, uh, let us know now or before the retreat if you guys want us to address that in some meaningful way. Uh, do you have another topic, Ms. Chair Quick Graham? I cannot hear her. Vice Chair O'Connor? Oh, there you are.
Yeah, sorry, I was muted and I was having a conversation with myself. Um, I think the final topic, and I'm kind of putting it all together, was really charter clarification, um, what you all view as priorities for the committee. I know you've already shared some this evening. And then I also just wanted to open the floor too, to any questions that you all have for us.
Okay, from your perspective, is the charter lacking in some way and not providing enough direction?
So I, I do know that discussion has been, and we focused, um, this time on kind of three areas, um, which we are currently addressing. Um, you know, going to the Wake County meetings and then publicly sharing with the meetings and had, you know, how to access those meetings. You know, we also have done the survey. Um, I think that we just wanted to make sure that what you all envisioned for us, we were on the right track. Um, and, and because our charter is pretty comprehensive, if there's anything that you would all, you all would want us to prioritize, then maybe we're not prioritizing right now.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you for that last question. Um, one of the items that I wanted to mention is that in the charter, we talk about workforce development. And we don't, I, I, I think the, the beginning statement says that we want to ensure reasonable proximity of Wake County Public Schools, high-quality education and workforce development opportunities for the Morrisville community. So maybe this year is, you've got a full plate. You know, there's a lot of things that you're, you're kicking off and you're moving forward. But I think in next year, it would be really nice to see some areas of workforce development. And we are, the council will be talking about the charter, um, this weekend hopefully. But the workforce development is traditionally done by community colleges. I mean, there are some, um, activities that are done by the high school, um, system. But maybe we do something or inquire, um, with Wake Tech about what skill sets or what they're doing to align with the needs of the workforce in the Morrisville community and surrounding areas and just, you know, bring that forward to see if there's opportunities for internships or, or, you know, different kinds of, um, development that we weren't really aware of that we could kind of boost out to the community that Wake Tech is offering.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Rau.
Um, just to follow up to that, I think that the workforce, that's a great point by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. I think that, um, the proximity, the proximity to Wake Tech, um, we have, you know, ten percent of all public companies in North Carolina are headquartered in Morrisville, Lenovo, Cisco, uh, Cineo's Health. And in the areas of technology and pharmaceutical life sciences, um, the role of work is changing. I think that's one thing Morrisville has that no other city has. We have, you know, so many opportunities for these young kids to engage with these employers and work with defining what the new role of work is. So I couldn't, Vicky, I think that's a great point, Councilmember, that we, um, really focus in. And we had that discussion early on when this committee was started. And I remember Councilmember Garamella specifically making points about that. So I think that's something that we haven't fo, maybe we have focused on it, but that might be like a track where we could really engage with the school board. And, um, you know, how is the role of work going to change? The kinds of skills the kids are going to need as automation puts people out of work? And then the kinds of new jobs that are going to be created? So, um, you know, info systems in Raleigh, but Councilmember Garamella and I and Mayor were there for the ribbon cutting and their CEO was here from Bangalore, India, and he said that, this was about two years ago. He said most of the jobs that they're creating are jobs that don't exist today. We, you know, and he said that two years ago. I mean, we need to be a part of that conversation. So I just think that's a great point. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Johnson, please.
So I'm, I'm going to bring up two points, um, that are, I think are important. Um, but I'm going to echo exactly what Steve and Vicky just said. Um, and I'm not going to repeat what they said because they, they did a beautiful job. I think that is one area we need to focus. And Wake Tech right now, um, is offering a career and college promise program. They, they actually just opened the application period yesterday. And that's going to take place right here on the Wake Tech campus in Morrisville. It is, it is a free program for high school students to be able to earn both high school and college credits. And again, it's called the Career and College Promise Program. Um, I, I think those are, those are the kind of opportunities that we have here in Morrisville that others don't have. I think, um, and with the fact that we have all of these major corporations right here in our, our community as well. That makes us incredibly unique. Um, so I would say absolutely, um, focus on that and help us get the work out, uh, or the word out about this. They actually call it the CCP program, um, short for Career and College Promise. Um, so I, I would focus there absolutely. And then, um, and I'm going to give kudos to, um, Councilmember Garamella too, because this, this was his seed, um, to create this committee. And, um, and when we all, and when he brought it up and when we all talked about it, it was in the vein of, um, the need for advocacy. So I would tell you that's where you need to, um, and this is me, um, but that's where, I, I would hope you spend a lot of your time to advocate, um, on behalf of our residents, um, to advocate, um, and, and let us, let us, the council know, um, what we need to be advocating on um, for our families and our, and our children. So advocacy number one, and then of course this, um, this whole, um, opportunity we have here with Wake Tech and workforce.
Yeah, indeed. It's about the advocacy, um, to make sure that we do get the high school that we're thinking about and the early college high school at Wake Tech. Um, those are the main goals. Try to identify early where our opportunities are, um, or where our pain points are and how we can advocate on the behalf of the residents. Um, so I'll now recognize, uh, Ms. Fuller and then Ms. Das Akasetti again. Ms. Fuller.
I'm sorry, uh, but I, um, my device was, um, dying and I had to fix the device. So that's why I was, um, interrupted earlier. I really didn't have any comments. I just wanted to make sure you knew that I was there.
Okay. We see you now.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Ms. Das Akasetti?
Thank you, Mayor Colley, but before I make my comment, um, Committee Member Benjamin has had her hand up for a while now. So would you like to go before me?
Of course. I wasn't sure if it hadn't come down. Ms. Benjamin.
I thought it was down. It appears down for me. I, I didn't have any further comment. I just wanted clarification and I got it.
Okay.
So I don't have anything else.
Ms. Das Akasetti?
Thank you, Mayor Colley. Um, I like, I, I, I must commend, um, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, Councilmember Rau and Ms., uh, Councilmember Johnson. Uh, it's got me thinking that maybe we should have some more short-term goals in MPAC. Uh, our main focus for the last year and a half has been primarily to how we can acquire schools. But I, I'm thinking that maybe like what they were saying, having some more advocacy and making people aware and the career opportunities here in Morrisville and the, the uniqueness of the position of Morrisville where we have so much companies, so much opportunities for kids and young adults. Maybe we could be looking at more advocacy, how we can probably possibly have something like a career. They, I'm not sure if I'm wording this right. A career opportunity day or where companies can come out, set up and follow our, our residents, the opportunities that are, are available and what are the qualifications and the skills they are looking for now and maybe ten years, fifteen years down the road. So if kids can prepare or families can prepare what the future holds and they can get their education towards that path. I'm not sure if that's make, that's making sense though.
So that might be something that, um, one or two of your members, if you wish, to start to interact a little bit more with the career development counselors at each of the high schools, for example. Um, start talking with some of the principals and just learning more about those opportunities that now exist. And, um, if it ends up being appropriate to just share it with staff and if staff feels like that's something that would be worth putting through the communications department, I don't think that necessarily would have to go through council for approval because if staff feels that it's something that's useful to our residents, um, we don't approve everything that goes through communications. Um, so I think that career fairs and things like that, that are maybe existing now, if one or two of you wanted to look into that and see if there's any way to amplify the current efforts or augment them, um, through your efforts, I think that's a great idea. Um, do any other council members have any comments on that? Okay. And workforce, uh, as was mentioned, really fits into Wake Tech. So if you don't already have, um, some budding relationships into that area, uh, that might be something to pursue. Obviously, you already know a lot of the Wake County Board of Education members, but it might be good to also reach out to, uh, Dr. Rawls or some of his staff just to make sure that you're on the radar and that you can be an asset and Morrisville can be an asset to their efforts. Okay. Looking in chat for anything else before we wrap up. This has been a really great discussion. Okay. I'll pass it back to Chair Quick Graham.
We are, that was everything we have. We appreciate your time.
Oh, we appreciate your guys' hard work, uh, so very much. And your last opening question gave us the opportunity to put in anything that we wished. Um, so that was great. As was mentioned, we will be discussing charters at the retreat. The retreat will be streamed so everyone can view it. Uh, so feel free to drop in Friday, Saturday or Sunday or all three. Um, we enjoy engagement and we want to hear, uh, everyone's input as much as possible as we try to do everything we can to serve all our residents, no matter what county they live in. Um, so on behalf of everyone, thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate it and we look forward to, uh, working with you even more in the future. Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our next item and, uh, enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you again for your time. So, yeah. Thank you in the chat from our council members. We'll now move on to, uh, action items, number ten. There is one action item on tonight's agenda, Resolution 2020 dash three eight zero, dash zero of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the land use plan adoption. Brad West, Senior Planner, will present the item, please. Mr. West.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so just a few update items for, uh, the land use plan. Um, we, uh, updated the future land use map, um, within the plan itself and then also created a separate, uh, sort of analysis map, uh, the flume some call it, um, Attachment Six. And that will show that it's now a substantially lower density map than what you saw at the last meeting. Um, so again, we appreciate all the discussion and sort of parcel by parcel movement along that map and the compromises made, uh, at that last meeting. Um, we added the Senior Living Congregate Care Language that was requested for medium-density residential future land use designation. That can be found on page twenty-four. Uh, we added some workforce housing language for the town center subarea. Uh, that can be found on page seventy-five. Uh, we also wanted to highlight the workforce housing language already in the plan. Um, there's a whole section dedicated to that affordability, um, workforce housing. Uh, that is on page forty-one. Um, council asked us to, during the future land use map discussion, council asked us to reach out to, uh, property owners, uh, the Davis family in particular on Family Farm Road. Um, there was discussion whether or not, you know, we, we go with low-density residential, the future land use map, or medium-density residential. Uh, we have spoken to, uh, Mr. Bobby Davis, uh, who owns most of the property back there. Um, he has alerted us that he does intend to sell, uh, those parcels within the next five years or so, approximately. Uh, he envisioned a medium to high-density residential development proposal for those parcels. However, uh, he does, uh, he is happy with his current lower density zoning. I think it's very low-density zoning, uh, until he actually sells. Um, so we're looking at maybe a five-year horizon there. Um, but in terms of the future, he, uh, is looking towards redevelopment. Um, he does, he wanted me to reiterate that, uh, he does not want a preemptive town initiated rezoning and staff informed him that that is not, um, intended at this moment. Um, uh, I think the last item we had was some discussion about the, uh, current, uh, airport overlay amendment delineation. Right now, uh, we show it sort of going across Watkins and NC fifty-four, taking a little zigzag down to, um, transair drive and sort of having transair drive as sort of the cutoff for any amended airport overlay, um, area. We heard that there was, um, a property owner who wished to, um, eliminate that zigzag and just make it a straight line. And I have all this in a map, in case you don't know what I'm talking about. Um, and essentially just kind of straighten it out from Watkins and NC fifty-four all the way over to the, um, eastern edge of town. Um, and, uh, council asked that staff, uh, propose, or bring that proposal to the FAA and get some input, um, from their end. Uh, we did show that to the FAA. Um, the FAA does not feel that that substantially alters our plan or what we presented to them back in December, um, and is fine with the adjustment. Um, so I just wanted to circle back on that. I think those are the main items that we were supposed to report back to you, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the plan itself.
Thank you very much, Mr. West. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I really appreciate staff's work over the last several weeks on many of the items that we mentioned during the land use review. Um, I would like to suggest that we, um, kind of put a framework around tonight's discussion. We do have many guests and we're excited that the, the MPAC committee is joining us for a work session. But it was, um, advertised that would be around eight. And I am very conscious that we're probably running thirty minutes behind right now. Would it be okay if we continue with the land use plan discussion for the next 30 minutes? And then pause if we need to, if we're complete, that's great, but at least consider a pause and then, um, do the work session with our guests and then continue discussion after that, um, activity is complete.
That sounds like that would be, uh, a reasonable request. Uh, would any council members like to, uh, share their thoughts on that? Sort of as an opt-out, that we'll discuss this for 30 minutes, meet with MPEAC, and then, uh, circle back if necessary. Okay, so we'll finish whatever comments we're at, at approximately 8 o'clock in order to start that part of our agenda, uh, knowing that we may, uh, circle back if we're not done discussing at that time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, looking in chat for anyone who'd like to make any comments, um, about what Brad said or about the land use plan or we are scheduled to vote on this tonight, so if you have any thoughts, um, about any further amendments or any thoughts, now is the time. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rawl, please.
Brad, I just want to thank you for all your work on this and, um, one question I had was, maybe you already, you mentioned I had some issues with Wi-Fi for a minute and I couldn't hear, or maybe it's too early to ask, but the, um, the, um, the moving the line and all that stuff, is that, it didn't seem like the FAA's had a problem with that, so who would be involved in that process for Mr. Shaw's property? And if it's not the right time to ask, we can always come back to that later.
Sure, no, I don't mind at all. Um, so I'm, I don't know if you can see this, but this is the airport overlay amendment, uh, map. Uh, that's currently in the plan. Um, there was discussion at the last meeting on whether or not we should, uh, make it a straight line instead of this sort of zigzag that you see around Trans-Air Drive. Uh, we know that there's a property owner there who, um, sort of disagrees with this alignment and would prefer a straight line versus the zigzag. Um, and they provided, I think they directly emailed some, uh, comments to you all about that. Uh, we did present this, uh, to the FAA and, uh, Mr. Tommy Dupree, uh, with the FAA, um, informed us that it does not substantially alter the recommendations in the plan. Uh, I think our biggest concern is just trying to ensure that we maintain this area um, as the current airport overlay A, just in case, uh, the RDU, uh, facility is expanded and there's a third runway uh, sort of near the Briar Creek reservoir. So just try to be mindful of that.
So have we given clear direction that we want that line straightened or not? I'm afraid I'm unable to see the map given my computer right now.
Oh, I can bring it back up.
Well, can you tell me what page in the agenda packet?
So this, this was something we quickly put together, um, that probably won't be in the agenda packet, uh, as far as I know. This was something we had to quickly show the FAA. We have mentioned at the last meeting, sometimes we have, uh, difficulty getting quick answers um, from various agencies, so we had to act fast, uh, and show them something. So this is a map that we're showing you now of the, uh, adjusted overlay, um, with a straight line versus what we have currently in the plan, which is best than zigzag. So basically, uh, the Watkins Road, uh, NC-54 intersection or near that is where the overlay adjustment starts. And then it carries over to Airport Boulevard and then it does a little zigzag down towards Trans-Air Drive, all the way towards the eastern edge of town. There's a property owner of Trans-Air Drive that does not wish to have that zigzag and wishes to be included in the airport amended area, airport overlay B. And so we proposed, you know, if we increase the airport overlay B area to the, to the dotted line shown on the map right now, uh, would FAA have an issue with that? And the FAA, to put it, you know, simply, does not have an issue with that, so. Uh, it is up to you as council whether or not you want to stick with what's in the plan, um, knowing already you have objections to any encroachment, uh, into this airport overlay area or, um, amended as shown in this map, or third option is you, uh, leave it in the plan and we can deal with it when it comes to you as a, um, rezoning and/or text amendment, uh, in the very near future.
Okay, so I'd love to hear, uh, any fellow council members' thoughts about which of those three options you'd like to go forward with at this time.
I, I'd like to just, if the FAA is fine with it, I would, I'm fine with moving the line, but it's really up to the other council members.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mayor Pretten Johnson?
So I, I would agree with Councilmember Rawl. If it's something we are gonna do, um, let's do it now. Um, but, uh, but Brad, for, for you all, what is the best, um, path forward on this, on this particular item?
So, uh, we're, we're open to all three options, however, if you want to adopt the plan tonight and want this changed, you could just simply roll that as a condition of adoption. Um, so in the resolution, um, this could be included. Uh, but if you want to wait, uh, when we actually bring the, so this is just a recommendation, right? This is in the, the land use plan, so none of this is binding. Uh, we will be coming to you all with the actual amendment to the overlay itself. Um, and that will show the exact delineation of where it's going to go. Um, and we, we can bring that, uh, back as shown in the plan or with the dotted line, whichever you all agree to tonight. Really doesn't, we don't have a preference.
Okay, but if we, if we do it tonight, it needs to, in the motion would be, uh, needed to be an amendment.
Correct, yeah, or condition of the document.
Or condition, I'm sorry, a condition to the resolution, got it.
Yep.
Well, I'd like to hear whatever, however others want to proceed. I'm, I'm fine. I think our, our intent, at least for some of us, um, we're okay with the line being moved, but, um, I need to hear from everybody if that's okay.
I'll recognize Councilmember Garamella for if I have a comment on that.
Yeah, I'm okay to move. Let's move forward. We have many other things to do. We already lost eight minutes.
Thank you, Councilmember Garamella. I also am fine with, uh, making the movement of that line a condition of our, uh, adoption either tonight or a later time. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I'd just like to weigh in and say I'm okay with the line moving as well.
Thank you. Is anyone else interested in sharing their thoughts? We have, uh, consensus to move the line at this time. Okay, seeing none, uh, you have direction to go ahead and, uh, make that, remind us that when we do adopt to make that one of the conditions, please. Um, I had, uh, another, I had two things that I wanted to discuss, um, well, three, actually. Uh, first, thank you very much for all the residents who have added, uh, additional comments. Um, we really appreciate all your thoughts, um, and your reitera, reiteration of, um, you being part of the process from the very beginning and sharing your ideas. Uh, I think we did some good work, uh, last time in finding compromise across the town. Um, there's two, uh, areas that I'd like to, uh, have the council discuss tonight that we didn't really address directly last time. Uh, one is the Family Farm, which I think in the plan still shows is moving from the very-low density to the medium-density, unless I'm mistaken, Brad. If we were to adopt as-is, I would request that the council, uh, please weigh in on whether or not we can keep that low-density as his letter, the applicant's letter actually, uh, indicated. Um, because as I said before, I don't think there should be any rush to give the development community, um, the signal that we're looking to have more development sooner. Uh, 'cause once the change is made, I think that Mr. West indicated last time that there are developers calling. Um, so if we were to go ahead and do that, I'm afraid that that would, um, happen sooner than the five years and I believe our infrastructure is not up to the task right now. Um, so that's my first of two. I'd love to hear back and then I'll go on to the second thing. At this time, I'd like to, uh, recognize Councilmember Robati.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I have no problem with moving the line. I would also like to add to the areas for discussion. Um, I'm not sure if we have addressed the issue presented in the letter by, um, Mr. Ed White that was, uh, that was emailed to council this week. I know, Brad, you're, you're probably more conversant with his issue than I am. Could, um, if you could just briefly outline, uh, what the issue is and what side of that the land use plan comes down on, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, well, actually, actually, I think it's gonna get out of hand and we'll get to eight before we get to anything. So if we could, um, take care of Family Farm Road and then we can go ahead and talk about the Ed White, just to keep the, the meeting moving forward rather than having to go back and revisit things.
That's fine. I wasn't suggesting that he do it this second. I just meant before we vote.
Yep, I, I understand. Everyone has a chance to chime in about items that they want to make sure are addressed before we vote. Um, so if council would please, uh, let me know in chat, announce in chat if you have a problem with it staying as low-density. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, please.
I, I think I was the only person because I think, um, Ann and Donna and I think Liz and this one already said, uh, MDR. And looking at the parcel and looking at the letter, um, obviously there's that difference between rezoning and the future land use and, um, I'm okay going with MDR in that area because it eventually will develop at some point. Obviously, I'm not for, uh, high-density, that doesn't fit in there, but MDR, I'm fine.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Fender?
Well, I was in favor of keeping it low-density if that is what the owner of the current residents want.
Um, is that your interpretation from the letter?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, Mayor Pretten Johnson, please.
So, um, yeah, I, I, I think the last time we talked about this, I came down, um, I did not want high-density but, um, was fine with medium-density. I think, and Brad, you, you correct me if I'm wrong, he, the property owner is saying to leave his underlying zoning as it is today. He does not want us to rezone it, but he does want it to be medium-density or high-density in the future. He, he is indicating that within the life of this land use plan, he anticipates either him selling, well, he'll sell the property and he'll develop it or somebody will develop it. I, I am not in favor of high-density, but I think medium-density does fit in this area. That is what he is asking for.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. He asked that, we just, he actually, uh, in his letter did state that he foresees this area developing as a medium, if not even high-density residential development proposal. Uh, and he, he plans on selling his parcels to a developer to build that in the next five years, but does not want to move before then and does not want us to come in and change his zoning, um, before then. Correct.
Okay, thank you. And we are not changing his underlying zoning. Um, I, I do think, uh, medium-density sits in the area, um, so I'm okay with that, but I, I would not be okay with the high-density.
Thank you, Mayor Pretten. Uh, so we have two people who are in favor of MDR. Um, so unless we hear more, uh, it will, it will stay as the low-density land use designation. Okay, seeing none, uh, Brad, please make that low-density designation on the land use plan when we adopt, so that will be another condition. Um, now we can circle back to Councilmember Robati's question about the Ed White letter and then I have another area that I'd like to look at and feel free to, uh, comment in chat if there's other areas from other council members.
Yeah, so I, I think the, uh, question, um, was, uh, in regards to Mr. Ed White, a large property owner and the McCrimmon Extension Area's concerns, um, and the letter addressed to you all. And I can't remember exactly when that letter was sent, but it was fairly recently. Um, uh, my understanding, and then I, again, I, I speak with, uh, his broker, um, on almost weekly basis regarding updates to the land use plan, so I'm pretty familiar with what, what they're seeking. So, uh, it seems the, the main, uh, intent of that letter and then something that Mr. White's been saying all along and many other property owners are saying along, uh, McCrimmon are saying all along is that any change to the, uh, underlying zoning district, you know, if it goes from IM to BAC, needs to be accompanied by an airport overlay amendment. Because even if we did change this to say BAC, uh, you would still have this airport overlay amendment that, or overlay uh, that would prevent any kind of residential development. Um, and so the, the two just need to coincide when we eventually do come back with a town-initiated rezoning for the subareas, you know, that they coincide, they happen at the exact same time. Otherwise, in their opinion, it's not worth it. Uh, and so they just, uh, and then, and then, and to answer your other question, does the plan, uh, fall on that, that argument? Yes, we, that plan, the plan is, is presented today at least, aligns with, uh, what Mr. Ed White is requesting.
Thank you very much for that clarification. So when the, uh, rezoning for the subareas occurs, the airport overlay amendment will be prepared to also concurrently happen, um, which would, uh, address his concern.
Correct.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Robati, was there anything else in that letter that you wanted to discuss?
No, there was not. Thank you.
Okay, um, there were two other small areas in the bottom of what you called the flume, the F-L-U-M, that I would like to discuss. Um, the Linda Drive across from Park Place and the Wilson Road. Uh, the Linda Drive, I believe, is slated to go from low-density residential, um, up to high-density residential. Um, and I think that for many reasons, uh, even though it's on the east side of 54 and all intents and purposes, it is part of, uh, the west side. I believe that that would be, uh, there are already some current homes on there. I don't think that we want to give signal that we want more density at an area of town, uh, Chapel Hill Road right there, which, until it's widened, um, right now, that is a real pain point for our town. Um, so I'd like to just address those, uh, that smaller parcel first. Um, I'd rather it not go to dark purple at all. I'd rather it stay at low-density residential and I'd love to hear, um, are you able to bring that up on the screen? Yes, so that's the purple one. That's right across from, uh, Park Place Shopping Center where the movie theater is. And I was just, uh, driving through there today. Um, and I think that that would be the appropriate place to leave the current residences and/or if they do redevelop, to have, uh, some space there rather than put in some really dense items. Love to hear any comments from the, my fellow council members on that. Okay, um, so unless, uh, we hear some comments that we want that to either remain on the plan as going to high-density or maybe a medium-density, uh, okay. Mayor Pretten Johnson?
So I'm fine with, um, the medium-density designation. It is, um, it sits in with the surrounding neighborhoods, so, um, I think medium-density makes sense in both of these locations.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please?
I'm sorry, I, I had this great comment that no one heard. Um, oh, gosh. So looking at this, um, I'm not convinced that high-density would be appropriate in the purple area, but medium-density seems more compatible with the adjoining properties. So I'm, I'm in support of a medium-density, um, designation there in the lighter lavender, um, section. I'm okay with a medium-density for consistency. So it just, um, because I, I, you can see the intensity around that area, it just, it's more like-for-like, so that's where I am right now. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, uh, two people who are interested in medium-density unless we hear some more. Okay, Councilmember Rawl? Councilmember Rao.
I agree with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson on this one, medium-density. I apologize to the council for, I'm having some technical issues in this end. So on the previous parcel, I, I'm sort of torn on the one, the one we just assumed that to keep it low-density residential. I was fine, my concern is with the property owner, that it, you know, for, that they would want it to be medium-density. So I don't know what the options are, if we can go back and make that medium-density or, you know, do we wait and go back to the maps of the fact, Brad, if it's low-density now, would they have an option to come back and ask us for rezoning?
Everyone will have to come back to ask for rezoning. So.
Okay. Well, anyway.
So, so let me, just to clarify our process here, right now, let's go ahead and just talk about the one that I identified on Linda Drive, which is now presently from LZR to HDR. I don't want to co-mingle the other one because I had some statements about that one as well. So I don't want to have people voting on it without hearing everyone's thoughts. So does anyone have, so we have two people who want the, the dark purple to go to medium-density instead of high-density. I'd like to revisit Councilmember Rao on that one item, the dark purple. Would you like to stay low-density? Would you like to go to medium-density or would you rather it be high-density?
To be, in the last meeting, as I look back at my notes, I was fine with that being medium-density. So I want to stay consistent on that and say medium-density for that parcel.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, medium-density.
Councilmember Fender, please.
So I just want to make sure I'm looking at the land use plan map in our, in the draft correctly, that this, that parcel is designated right now as high-density. Is that correct?
Yeah, currently as proposed, it was going to high-density.
Okay. I would be in favor of having that medium-density.
Thank you. Yeah, it's the one on the screen right now. Councilmember Robati, please.
I would also be okay with medium-density there. I don't want high-density.
Okay. Brad, I think you have clear direction on the dark purple parcels, which should now become lavender.
Yep.
As a condition of our upcoming rezoning. Okay, now I'd like to speak towards the lavender, which is more up on Wilson Road there, near Cary Parkway. There are a few homes on those existing parcels. Some of that is actually open space that has not yet developed. I just drove by there earlier today. And that, I think, is one of the few places left in town where actually you can have some good spacing between the homes. And I see how there is a lot of density around there, but I think that that would be a really nice spot. It reminds me of Preston Retreat along Davis Drive, where they have some good-sized homes on slightly larger lots. I think this would be an opportunity to do that rather than to tear down a few homes to put in a lot of density. I think existing homes could coexist with new homes that are a little bit larger. So at this time, we're talking about the lighter lavender there. I'd love to hear from my fellow council members if they would like that to remain medium-density, to speak up. Otherwise, it will go back to its existing planned use of low-density. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella, please.
Okay, I'm okay with MDR there.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I am as well.
Okay, I'll recognize you after a couple others. Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
I'm fine with MDR. It fits in with the surrounding development that's already out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender.
I'd like to keep it low-density.
Councilmember Rao, please.
I'm fine with MDR.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
My position hasn't changed as like an MDR.
So we have four people who would like to be MDR, so that will remain as drafted as MDR.
All right.
We are really close colleagues. Does anyone have anyone else, anything else that they would like to address before we put this to a vote? Because we could possibly do it before eight. Okay, maybe we should, there's a suggestion that maybe we should take a break and then we could readdress this after we deal with MPE Act, because we're really looking forward to being fresh for that. So I think that that's a great idea. Mayor Protem. We're gonna take a 10-minute break and then come back at seven, I mean, 8:07, because my clock says 7:56 right now. So please come back at 8:07 and we'll convene our meeting with our advisory, education advisory committee. After we're done with that, we'll come back to the land use plan, make sure that everyone's comfortable with it, make sure there's no other areas that we wanted to address. We've had some good discussion about it and I think we'll be probably ready to vote. So please be back at 8:07. Thank you all. At this time, we're gonna circle back to the land use plan, because I think we are very close to getting a vote on that. So we're moving back to action item number 10, and there's one action item on tonight's agenda, Resolution 2020-380-0 of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the land use plan adoption. Brad West, junior planner. At this time, I would like to ask him to review what he's heard for tonight and lay out the conditions that we've agreed on so far. And then I'd like to hear from council members in chat if there's anything missing or anything that we want to do before we take this vote. So, Mr. West.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so, so far, what I've heard, and feel free to jump in if it's not correct, I've heard consensus on council to leave the Family Farm Road parcels as, or turn the Family Farm Road parcels in the future land use map to low-density residential. I've had consensus on Linda Drive for medium-density residential. That's across from the Park Place Shopping Center. I have consensus from council on Wilson Road parcels for medium-density residential as well. And then the other related item was the adjustment of the overlay amendment area. Unanimous, it sounds like unanimous willingness to make that a straight line versus a zigzag.
That is my recollection as well. If any other council members have issue with any of those four conditions of the approval, that will have to be part of the motion. Please let us know in chat. Okay. So I'll ask Brad and/or Michelle, can we just go ahead and have a motion and note with the conditions just mentioned by Mr. West? Would that be sufficient?
Yeah, and you can word it specifically with the actual properties you want changed or you can, Michelle can chime in if I'm wrong here, just mention that the changes for the future land use map as indicated by council are included. I don't know if there's a preference from the planning director on that.
Yeah, I was hoping to just shortcut it and just say, as you just stated, but Ms. Deagle.
That would be fine. And obviously, Mayor, we would then edit the resolution before you signed it.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
Well, if we're ready for a motion, I'll make the motion, but I want to make sure that we're all ready.
Okay, so I'll give a few seconds if anyone in chat has any issues with anything. I think we've had lots of comments on the plan. That would add many minutes, so I think if we could just move to a motion, that would be great. So looking for anyone who has an issue with voting on the motion at this time. Seeing none, I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson. Hold on, sorry. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender for clarification.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to clarify that there were some parcels of land on Church Street that we had talked about at one point on the flume map, as whether it was going to be low-density or medium-density. So in looking at the map that is in what I think is the latest draft land use plan, I want to just make sure that those parcels are indeed low-density.
And that is why we're here. Mr. West, can you put that up on the screen?
Sure, yeah. And you should, yeah, you should be able to see it. Now, this is the copy that you were sent in your packet. You'll notice the large area in the middle here were the Church Street parcels, and there's also some Church Street parcels up here, formerly medium-density residential, I think for the most part, are now being shown as low-density residential. So substantial area now being shown as low-density. Also, some of these back here in Providence Place. So yes, they have been changed.
Great. I'm good then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you need to see the new flume map too, Ms. Fender? Councilmember Fender, or are you good?
I do not need to see the new flume map.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Checking into chat again. Okay, I will recognize Mayor Protem Johnson for a motion.
So just to clarify before I make the motion, Brad, I'm okay with mentioning these three areas, the Family Farm, the Linda and Wilson, and the straight line. Do you want me to include that in my motion? Would that be, or just to be clear?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's totally fine. We'll, we'll do whatever you all are comfortable with. If you want to call it a specific, I think it was, yeah, Family Farm Road, Linda Drive parcels, and the Wilson Road parcels were the three that you all wanted to change in. And of course, the airport overlay amendment line as well would be the fourth condition.
Okay. So before anybody's seconds, let me make a motion and make sure Brad's good with this.
Sure.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-380 of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the land use plan adoption with three changes that council has made tonight. One is to the Family Farm Road area, leaving it as low-density residential. Second change is to the Linda Drive and Wilson Road properties, making them all medium-density residential. And then the third would be to straighten the line at the McCrimmon sub-area for the noise, airport noise overlay. Is that good enough, Brad?
Yeah, McCrimmon, or I'm sorry, the airport noise overlay, just as that, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati.
I second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, and I believe Councilmember Garamella wants to make a comment before we vote.
Yeah, I can do, ask, okay, motion, yeah. Absolutely. Let's finish the votes and then I can comment. I don't want to hold up the, you know, the must-awaited voting. Let's do that and I'll comment.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Town Clerk Smith, if you would please do a roll call vote on the motion to approve the draft land use plan as amended. Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Carley.
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2020-380-0 as amended passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate all the hard work you all have done and, and going through this plan, it's, it's been a great experience and just congrats to you all for having a new land use plan. So now we're gonna, you know, I'm not gonna go away yet. We're gonna do implementation stuff soon at retreat, but I just want to thank you all for, again, for just taking the time to meet with us, talk with us, and, and, you know, overall, just the work you've done over the last, I guess, since 2018, since we started all this. So thank you.
It's been a lot of work and we appreciate you and do not go anywhere just yet. I think we have council members lined up to make comments, most of which are gonna be thanks, and we're gonna try to keep them brief. First, Councilmember Garamella.
Yeah, Brad, I would say, you know, I wish I have your willpower and professionalism and cool-headedness through this whole process, you know. I, many times I thought like, you know, this is it, you know, this will break Brad, you know, but I think you were spot on right from two years. I think this, and also want to thank House Levine, it, it was a very fair process. You went community by community, you know, COVID came in. Otherwise, the intent was to reach out to every community, get the inputs. And thanks to Michelle and the rest of the staff here who have supported and getting this as a home run. Also, would like to thank, you know, our citizens. They were engaged and it helped to get their perspective. So I guess overall, I'm pretty happy. And as you rightly said, there's more work to be done, you know, the, all the details will come later. So I'm looking forward how we can work and get that quickly so that we are ready. Thanks a lot.
Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, thank you, Brad. You probably thought you would never get here.
[laughing]
Especially with Anne and I being probably a little bit more difficult. Where's your buddy Nick? Is he here to be able to celebrate?
He, he wa, he is, or he was, I don't, let me see if he's on the, the show.
He's probably, yeah.
Yeah, he is, actually. Nick, Nick is there. Nick, can you hear us?
I can, yeah.
Well, thank you, Nick. I appreciate you bearing with us. I know I was, I've been hard on you guys and, but we, we got here, so thank you. Also, really want to thank the residents of Morrisville and all of the comments. I know there were many, many comments that were given over the past year. Many of you commented multiple times over this past year, and there was a big push over the last month by a lot of residents. And I definitely appreciate all your comments. It did make a difference, so, so thank you all. And please just stay engaged, because we need to hear from all of you. So thank you. And thank you for, to my other council members for, you know, I think we got to an acceptable compromise. I'm really, really happy that the parcels like around Kits Creek, along Church Street, especially, that's why I wanted to confirm with Brad, especially those parcels along Church Street, just north of the existing townhomes. So, you know, not all areas that I agree with, but I think we got to a really good land use plan that, you know, meets the needs of everyone. So thank you all.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you. I would like to echo my thanks to Brad, of course. He's been very good at listening, listening to the council, listening to the public, listening to- listening to business stakeholders. There's so many different stakeholders in this plan, and I think that through iteration after iteration, we did receive good, quality feedback, and that was very important to this process. It can be exhausting when we're doing many iterations for people that are public viewing, but trust me, when you comment and when you add insights into different, you know, views and so forth, that does help us understand. It's important that we recognize the business community did weigh into this process as well as the residents, because there are financial interests, and we need to recognize that our town is almost 50% commercial and 50% residential. So I feel like both of our stakeholder, major stakeholder groups did contribute several times to help us understand their needs and different challenges for them that we might not have otherwise considered. So it's really important that we look at this holistically and balanced, and there was compromise, and I did have little faith before we did this that we were not going to be able to compromise, but I'm very happy that we did reach the point that we did. This is part one. There's, there's other iterations of refinement to this plan and how it, it works through the UDO. So stay tuned and help us along the way by giving us your input in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Ral, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. I just want to reiterate to thank the staff. Brad West, Debbie Nernan, MVP, for being, all of your team for doing a great work, and the Planning and Zoning Board. And I guess just to wrap up, I mean, I think that we have over 85 communities in Morrisville, and it's a mix of single-family, multifamily, and single-family detached, and I really want to thank all the residents who weighed in on the concern of the demands on Morrisville's infrastructure. And I think I just want all of you to know that sometimes it's really hard to develop a shared vision, but that's what we're trying to do. So the land use plan, in my opinion, is a way for us to develop that long-term vision of the plan, where we can control the quality of development, the kind of housing that we would have in Morrisville, to be there for the demographic that's going to work here, and then continuing to partner with developers for the parks and amenities, so to be a truly live, work, play community. And I think that it's just been a challenge, I think, sometimes, to develop that shared vision, but I can say that we're all trying to listen to you, and, you know, I think that, I heard the word "upzoning" a lot, but just, just because we accept the land use plan, it doesn't mean that we're not hearing you about controlling the infrastructure when we can, and we can do that through conditions and conditional rezonings. So that's all I'll end with. I mean, I, I just think it's been a lot of work and a lot of progress, and it's one shared vision for one Morrisville, and I think we, we achieved a lot. So just thank each of you, and my colleagues in the council, and Levine, and the entire planning staff and team, and the citizens. Thank you.
Councilmember Robati?
Yes, I would like to add my thanks to Brad. Huge accomplishment for you, for the council. I'm very glad that we approved this plan 7-0. I think that it's really important that we, that we have a shared vision and that we come to consensus on that shared vision, and I'm really, really happy that we were able to do that. I know that none of us is 100% on the plan. We all have our things that we wish were different or that, but, you know, I think that everybody's equally unhappy, so that counts for something. You know, everybody compromised a little bit, everybody backed off their entrenched position, and we got there in the end. So I think this was a really good exercise for us, and thank you all, especially Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Johnson, please.
Okay, Brad, we're, we're not done thanking you. I need to, I need to, I need to say thank you to Brad, to Michelle, and, and the whole planning department that was a part of this process, I'm sure. For those that may not know, this process started three-plus years ago. This is a long time in the making, and, and these are important plans that we all deliberate over and compromise on. So I too want to thank my fellow councilmembers on compromise. I, I have always said compromise comes from a place of strength. It is, it is, you need to be a strong person to be able to compromise, and so I thank each and every one of you. I think we all represent a community that's very diverse in their, in their opinions and their needs and their desires and wants, and, and it is incumbent on each one of us to make sure all of that is represented in our deliberations, and, and I think we have done that, and so I, I am really proud of that. I, I do want to say to all the citizens and those in the business community that weighed in, thank you. You weighed in three years ago, you weighed in in the last couple of weeks, and all of that mattered, and I, and I appreciate that. And I, I do want folks to know that you have been heard. There's a difference between hearing and listening. Not only have you been heard, but we have listened very carefully. I, it is not lost on me or any, any of the rest of my councilmembers of the challenges that we still have here in the town. This plan that we've just adopted tonight is only the first step in dealing with our development and our growth in this community. There are really important steps that will be coming next, that will, will have the details and the specifics that will help us address all of the issues that you brought up, issues like green space and mitigating traffic congestion, school capacity. We've heard all those issues, every single one of us, and now it's really important for us to move forward and to really make progress and address the details, because the details matter. So the UDO updates are critically important, and there is never-ending amount of work here in the town of Morrisville, but it's all work that is necessary, is important, and reflects our diverse community.
Thank you. I'll go last before we move on. Thank you to Brad, the entire planning staff, all the different departments that contributed to this, Nick with House Levine, our residents, first and foremost, for all their input for years, really made a difference these last six weeks. Thank you especially to Brad for creating the Flume map, as he called it, the first version and the second version, which made our decision-making a lot easier and visualized, and I think that's what made the compromises that we came to possible. So we couldn't have done any of this without a lot of painstaking work from staff and a lot of input from our residents, and a lot of hard work from our fellow councilmembers. There were a lot of discussions behind the scenes, and I'd like to thank each and every one of you for keeping an open mind and for helping us get to this place. And as was mentioned, this is not the end of this journey. This is the start of a continuing better future for Morrisville, so it's up to us and incumbent upon us to keep on keeping our residents engaged and keep on doing good work on their behalf. So thank you all very much, to everyone on the council and all the staff in the entire town. This was a team effort. At this time, we're going to move on to the next item, which is, and so finally, Brad, you want to say one final last thing? Brad, Michelle?
Just, again, thank you all, and thanks to the citizens for participating, and the folks who participated in the technical advisory committees, planning zoning board, other advisory committees that weighed in. You're right, it was definitely a team effort, and, you know, House Levine was, is great to work with, very responsive to the changes that we threw their way, so I just want to thank House Levine and then Nick Davis especially for all the hard work that, that he's done. And I'll hand it to Michelle in case she wants to chime in.
Ms. Steagall, yes, please.
Yeah, thank you, Brad, and yes, I would love to chime in just to extend my thanks to you as well. I'm very fortunate to have the staff that I do and a staff that really cares about this town, and I think you saw that with Brad's work. He put his heart and soul into this project and is extremely passionate about the future of the town and about this project, and just really appreciates all the hard work and the vision. Thank you, Brad.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Ms. Steagall, and a lot of people probably don't know that the planning department was a little bit understaffed through some of this process, so there was a lot of heavy lifting being done by our town staff, so much thanks to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. Our annual retreat will take place virtually from Friday, February 26th until Sunday, February 28th, and will be livestreamed, so anyone interested can view it. Every Saturday, our Healthy Food Hub hosts the Western Wake Farmers Market from 9:30 a.m. until noon. Please come and visit it, visit and practice the three W's. Our next free meals distribution at Morrisville Elementary School will be Saturday, March 6th, from 11:30 a.m. until 1 p.m. Please tell your friends and neighbors. It is the first and third Saturday every month. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protam Johnson for a quick comment.
I'm sorry, I'm, I was just trying to type disregard that comment. No, I don't have a comment right now, I'm sorry. I couldn't type it fast enough.
Okay. Now we're on item 12, and guess what? Mayor Protam Johnson, you're first for council comments. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protam Johnson for the first of our council and manager comments.
Thank you. I need to get my list up, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, of course.
If you all will hold on with me one minute, because I had a list of comments I wanted to make, and now I can't find them.
Well, I'll take the pressure off. I'll go first real quick, I just have something short.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
And then you can go second. I want to thank our MAFC staff, who were so proactive with communications in regards to the weather event this past week, and to our Public Works and other staff who prepped roads and equipment and were ready to work shifts in darkness and bad weather, and for our first responders who are on 24/7, 365, and all weather. In essence, thanks to all of our staff, who are always ready to do whatever is thrown at them, doing a great job, so we can't thank you enough. Mayor Protam Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I wanted to just, I don't know, congratulate is probably the night, not, not the right word, but to thank the chairs and vice-chairs that we appointed to our committees tonight. During our consent agenda, one of the items was to appoint the chair and vice-chair that was recommended by the committees, and we do that with all our committees, so I wanted to make sure to say thank you to all the chairs and vice-chairs of all our committees, and to thank all our members that serve on our committees, and thank them for their dedication and service to, to our citizens. Your work is deeply important to us, and we thank you for that, all of us do. The other comment I wanted to make was that the governor has his modified stay-at-home order in effect through February 28th, but I do understand, if I heard correctly, right before the council meeting started, that he may be speaking tomorrow, so maybe there'll be an announcement where he will modify his modified stay-at-home order, or lift it, or whatever, but it does, it does seem like our, our numbers are, are going in the, in the right direction, in the better direction, so stay tuned for that, and I am, I am, I am hoping that we can all get back to some kind of normal again sooner than later, so look forward to hearing what the governor has to say. And, and on the COVID front, I, I've been trying to share with folks at every opportunity I can about the chances to get appointments for your COVID vaccine, because that is, seems to be critically important to a lot of folks. Walgreens, and I looked this afternoon before the council meeting started, but Walgreens has appointments this week. There are Walgreens here in the Triangle that have appointments this week for a vaccine if you are eligible to get your vaccine, if you're in the, in the category, the right category. So I, I would urge folks to go look at walgreens.com if you are still looking for your vaccine. And also, the town of Morrisville will be a site for COVID testing the first week in March, and I would urge those that would need COVID testing to, you have one here locally in Morrisville early March. It's on our website, it's on our, all our social media accounts. It will be held in our Morrisville Community Park. And I think that was the end of my comments, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
I didn't think I was going to have a comment, but then Liz reminded me of the COVID. I guess a couple of things is because of some things I'm having to deal with at work. Even though, you know, our numbers are getting better, less cases, we still all need to remain vigilant in our mask usage and social distancing and all those same things. I know that all of us are getting COVID fatigue, I know I am, I know I'm sick of this, but I will say it is still an issue. We, I was dealing with a situation this week at work where I have an engineer at a construction site, and contractors are dropping like flies because they're all getting COVID, and then their whole crew has to quarantine. It ended up, my engineer doesn't have COVID, but everyone around him has had COVID that he's working with, and so now he has to quarantine. He's away from his family. He can't travel back home now, so he's stuck in a hotel room with the possibility that he may get COVID and, and cannot go home as well. So the, the, it's still out there, we need to remain vigilant. And second, I will say, just as a parent of a school-aged child, I know it, I'm dealing with, you know, the stress of having my son be, doing remote learning almost a year now. I thought I was going to have it easy since I didn't have small children, but it, you know, as his guidance counselors are saying, the high school kids are hitting the wall now with this stuff, and they're feeling it, I'm feeling it as a parent. So just hang in there, guys. We'll get through this together. I know it's hard, and it, it pretty much sucks, but we'll get there, so that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Ral, please.
Congratulations to all of our students, all of our Morrisville students who took the ACTs today. I'm sure you all did well, and we're very proud of you. I'd like to echo everything that's already been said about the three W's. Don't give up now, we're almost, we're in the home stretch. You know, there's a vaccine, it works, we can do it. So let's all stay strong, three W's, and we'll get there.
Excellent advice. Councilmember Ral, followed by Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson.
Oh, well, just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson for speaking so well at the core meeting 10, 10 days ago, or a week ago, and there were some really great slides. One of the numbers that really came out to me was that in Morrisville, 52% of many residential incomes are spent on housing, so I think that's important for us to start looking at data so we can make, you know, better decisions about, you know, affordable housing or workforce housing. Thanks for Mayor Protam giving us the reminder about Walgreens, and the one on Davis Drive, I think they are taking appointments, you can just go to the website. Wake Med Soccer Park has a testing site as well. Thank Commissioner Savania for sharing that, and that's open, I think, this, all the way to the 27th, like, like 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. And I've had some seniors tell me it has been advantageous for them, just go to the DHHS site and go, go to another county, and that's really about it. The only other thing, we have a big Indian- The only other thing, we have a big Indian community and, and Morrisville, and that they, just to let everyone know that they've, if you're traveling to India, you have to get 72 hours negative COVID test before you board the plane. And the exception is death of the family. And the expert of travel to India who can answer better for our community is Councilmember Garamella, and I just wanna thank him for, you know, just doing so much behind-the-scenes work. He's, I guess it's sort of like a roast satish meeting today, but he, he also helped get the priests in the temples vaccinated and things like that. But because of his work with the embassy, sometimes he and I get a lot of calls about, you know, is it safe to go to India? And it can be very complicated to just make sure that you call the embassy and you make sure everything's all right before you just get on a plane, because we've had some situations where people go there and they've been turned around and had to fly right back. But congrats on the land use plan. And the final thing, I wanna thank Mayor Colley for always serving the food at the distribution sites, and I appreciate him being out there and, and leaving those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ral, and you've been there a few times serving beside us, so we really appreciate your efforts as well. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to share a little bit about the core team meeting that occurred last Friday. There was a session on affordable housing in the region of the Triangle J Council of Governments. We learned about affordable housing projects and affordable housing activities in Durham County, Wake County, Chatham County, all the various counties in our region. But most importantly, the presentation called out Morrisville for like our average median income, the types of houses that we have naturally occurring, and some of the other housing types. What I'd like to do for the council is share those slides with you, and we do have a session of affordable housing discussion in our retreat this weekend, and that might be helpful information in addition to what staff is preparing for us. So, I was really happy that the timing was so good, that we will be able to have really good current data that we can review and discuss for this weekend. So, thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, I don't want to be in between wine bottle or a champagne bottle that many people want to open after the land use, but I would just try to say thanks to my fellow council members, because I think what we did was good. We agreed to disagree on many areas, but at the end of the day, we came to a consensus and voted for it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Manager Page, are there any comments from you or staff?
No, sir.
I'm not sure you could hear, Mayor. No, thank you.
I guess the wine bottle already started.
Would any staff like to make any comments at this time? Okay. We're having some technical difficulties that I'm hearing in the chat from our staff that they do not have any comments at this time, so we appreciate them as always. We will next see everyone at the retreat. Starts on Friday. At this time, I would like to thank you all for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.towncouncil.org/council for additional contact information. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati for her motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson?
I will second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. Town Clerk Smith, would you please do the honors?
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Ral?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Most to adjourn, passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Have a nice week. We'll see you on Friday.
See you this weekend, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.